Moving on, we're now ready for oral communications from the council, two minutes each. And the way I'll be calling you will be Felipe, Lowell, Trina, Paco, Aurelio, and Ari. So we'll start with Felipe. And Tamara, can you take the screen off of the, your, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So Felipe, you're on.
Okay. You know, first of all, my condolences to the families of the, of the lost ones in the recent gang violence. I know that it's, it's been a while that the city of Watsonville has had, that we've lost folks to gang violence. It's been actually quite a while, and I'm really saddened by this and infuriated at the same time. But you know, again, that's someone, you know, that's somebody's son, that's somebody's brother. And I have to agree with the earlier person that said, I think it was Bernie that said, and I verified that we can't arrest our way out of gang violence. It's really, you know, we have to address it with, 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 you know, some social programs as well. But you know, it's, we're kind of in this pickle where we're in this pandemic where we can't do some of the programming that we want to do that we usually do, actually. You know, our parks and wrecks, you know, the youth center is closed right now. We can't convene in there because of the pandemic. You know, I'm looking forward to, you know, hopefully after November and after January, hopefully that we'll be able to reconvene and start these programs back up where we can work with youth again. Because you know, it's, it's, you know, we can't rest on our laurels, you know? It's been a long time since we haven't had, you know, gang fatalities like this. But you know, the gang issue has been there, you know, it's been there in Watsonville. So we have to continue to work, you know, make sure that we work with young people, make sure that we work with youth to both, you know, resolve and to resolve some of the underlying issues that create gang violence. So you know, it's a, it's a somber moment, you know, from, you know, you know, we do the peace and unity every, every summer, and it's been a while since we added names due to gang violence. And unfortunately, now we've added, you know, several names due to gang violence.
Felipe, your time's up, so if you could just have your final sentence.
My final sentence, I want to invite people to a traffic safety input meeting that we're having for people that live in Corleones, Calabasas, Green Valley, in Amesti on October 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. I will post it up, it's going to be October 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much, Felipe. Okay, moving on to Lowell.
Thank you very much, Mayor Garcia. You know, it's pretty evident that we have a lot of challenges in Watsonville. And you know, as days grow shorter and the night grows longer and the seasons change, some of those, we need to change as an attitude as well. And so the bewitching hour is almost right around the corner for us. And while Halloween can be kind of scary, it's the, it's the election season, it sometimes gives me chills. And I was really glad to get my ballot in the mail the other day. I was worried that I wasn't going to be receiving it, and they had to send me two. And I never did see the first one. And so we don't know where it went, but I'm sure other people may have that similar problem. So you know, it's the whole city that I'm concerned about, and that's why I spend time in District 6 and area, school district, Area 6 promoting qualified candidates and trying to make sure that we're going to have a better future in this community. And so I just want to say, choose, you know, it's Halloween and people do masquerade and they do dress up, and that's great for Halloween. But in the election season, we need to really dig deep and look into the hearts of these candidates and see who really is going to represent us in the most complete and, and most responsible way. And so I just ask the voters to think about their decisions, and many of them already have and have voted. And we say, thank you very much, thank you voters. And for those who have not yet voted, look at the candidates very closely and see who really does represent your values the most. And, and who do you think is going to be able to lead the city into a better, a better future as well as the state and the nation? So think about what you're doing when you vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lowell. Okay, moving on to Trina.
Yes, thank you. And again, I want to reiterate how important your vote matters. Many of these elections are down to the last couple ballots. I think some of us on council have seen that experience in the past, especially representing our districts. So it is really important that we get that vote out. And those in the family, make sure that you give everybody that has their, their, their chance to vote to get that ballot cast. I want to bring up a few concerns that, by, by taking a look at this district and talking to some, several of the residents. And it has to do with the, some things coming out with the public works and revisiting some of these allocations for the safety of the residents, getting some of the items painted up again for the red zones, the ADA safety component. These will be some comments I have on one of the closed session agenda items when it comes to Measure D. But the trash isn't getting picked up in some of these areas. Street sweeping still needs to be happening over here. We still have maybe some driving through some of these neighborhoods to ensure that the vehicles are off the street on the time that trash is to be collected and the streets to be swept. So all neighbors, neighbors and neighborhoods have the opportunity for a clean and safe neighborhood. So I'm hoping that we nudge a little bit on getting the compliance with some of those areas that are really tightly impacted by the vehicles so that everybody in those communities can have the quality of life that many other neighborhoods can have the ability to have. And, and again, I'll bring this up on the closed session item or the consented item that I'll make more comments.
Okay, thank you, Trina. Moving on to Paco.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Just want to thank everybody who called in a few minutes ago to give a talk about issues that are concerning them around the community. We always appreciate hearing from you, and believe it or not, sometimes it's a good wake-up call for us to know that these things are happening. So thank you to everyone. I want to echo what Felipe, I think, sort of said, and that we, we send condolences to the families that lost family members this past weekend. You know, we sort of, it's tough because, you know, it's, the system failed these young men and, or these individuals. And you know, a lot of the, the prevention work should have been done maybe five, 10, 15 years, years ago. But you know, funding is never there, resources are there. But you know, as somebody that was able to take advantage of all the free and low-cost services that the city provided, they do go a long way, and they're really just, you know, it's everything that some, some young people have. So definitely being able to focus that a little bit more, I think would, you know, we can guarantee that they, that their death is not in vain and that we're taking steps to prevent other individuals from going down that same path. I do want to encourage everyone and invite everyone to the Wine and Roses virtual event, you know, for transparency reasons. I work there, I'm a, a member of the Health Trust.
I'm on Zoom right now, the council meetings.
But not just, not just the Wine and Roses, but all nonprofit fundraisers, please support, please donate to the ones that are doing good work. They need your support, they're still working. And please vote, please vote. I know everyone said it, but you know, here in the city of Watsonville, County of Santa Cruz, we want to make sure and we want to guarantee that everyone's vote will be counted. You know, make sure to track your, your ballot, make sure that any mistakes that do are on there, that we take care of them right away so that your voice is heard. And I thank everyone who's already voted, and I thank everyone who, who is about to vote. So thank you, Mayor Zimer.
Okay, thank you very much for those words. Moving on with Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo back again, well, my fellow councilmen have said, go out and vote. Remember to vote, it's important, especially locally, your voice counts. But, but touching on bases on the deaths that have occurred within our community, from the young lady that lost her life due to violence, domestic violence, to these, they're not young men, they were adults. They lost their, again, their lives to violence, to gun violence. That I think is a factor that we need to remember and not forget, that there was violence that created this. And we do need to bring more resources in to our community and continue to work with our community. It's really important that we do that. And especially right now with this pandemic, with folks having too much idle time on their hands, and sometimes some of them not having enough resources to meet the days and to meet, and then they look for easy, easy opportunities. With that said though, I'd like to thank the Red Cross for all their work that they've done for our community. I also like to thank the Salvation Army, and I'd like to give a shout out to the Salvation Army because they're going to be doing their kickoff, which is a fundraiser for the Salvation Army, which helps us locally, that money stays locally. And so when we can't have nonprofits like the Health Trust, CAB, Community Bridges, Pahravale Prevention Center, Monarch, the Pahravale Shelter, those are all important resources within our community to help folks get out of conditions that they don't want to be in sometimes, from not being able to pay their rent to having substance abuse. You know, so we need to support those folks as much as we can as a community and as a city. But again, don't forget to go out and vote, it's really important. It's one of the most important rights that we have as U.S. citizens. And I'd really like to take the time in this last second to appreciate those speakers that came out and spoke and gave us some good information to continue on. Thanks.
Thank you, Aurelio. Okay, moving on with Ari.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm not going to take too long. It's kind of a heavy heart this week. Condolences, of course, to the families that lost folks this last week and in the past weeks from violence, COVID. I also want to take a moment and I'm going to cut to the end of this to say.
Ari, something happened to your.
Can you hear me now? Okay, you can hear me now. Okay, so I'll keep my head straight with my internet. We want to encourage everybody to vote, please vote.
I can't hear you, the rest of you hear her? Yes, okay, it must be me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I do want to say, we had another loss, and I am a teacher, this morning. Linda Walsh Inesio, who was, was a teacher in our district for over 40 something years. She's a kindergarten teacher out at Hall District School, taught at Bradley School, and she unexpectedly but peacefully passed away this morning. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge who she was to all the many children who are now in their 40s and 50s who had her as a kindergarten teacher. And she was, she was homegrown as well. She was Watsonville from day one. So I just want to say, rest in peace, Linda. Thank you.
I think I saw a thank you, because I can't, I didn't hear a thing that you said for some reason. And I'm hoping that my audio will come back, but thank you for sharing. In terms of my report, two weeks ago, the Pahravale High School had a national coming out gathering. I was asked to say a few words, and one of the things I shared was that two years ago, I spoke to a student at Watsonville High School who identified himself as bisexual. However, in deeper conversation, he admitted he really didn't like girls. But he believed by being bisexual, he was less queer. In the end, he admitted he was gay. And to me, this is just an example of the difficulty in identity that some LGBT youth might have. Secondly, I'm just so pleased that the city's still working closely with our seniors. I recently joined Katie, our senior center coordinator, and Idma from Meals on Wheels to give Mr. Manuel Zayas a proclamation for his 100th birthday. Mr. Zayas is from Oaxaca, he came to the United States as a boceto in the 1950s. He raised his family here and worked primarily in the strawberries until he retired when he was in his 70s. When I gave him the proclamation in Spanish, he kept saying, this is for me, this is for me. He was such a sweet gentleman, and I really want to thank Katie for her continued work with our seniors. And so that concludes my presentation. Well, moving on to Alan, a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council considered three items in closed session. The first one, property at 2127 31 West Beach. The council received the report and gave direction. The second item on property was 7th Second Street, again, received a report and gave direction. And the third item was a conference with labor negotiator and received a report that took no action. That concludes my report.
Mayor, would you, oh. Would you allow me a few minutes to remind the public that we are open for elections? Our office here in the Civic Plaza is open as a voting center from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. And we'll be here this weekend, 9:00 to 5:00, Saturday and Sunday. And then again, Monday, 8:00 to 5:00, and Tuesday will be here from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. So if you have any questions about your ballot, if you haven't registered, if you didn't receive your ballot, please come to our office and we'll be able to help you. Thank you.
Okay, I think I saw, thank you, I'm still not hearing anything. So what I'm going to do is, we're going to do a proclamation right now. And after we conclude from the proclamation, I'm going to ask Trina if you will take over for the reports to the council. And I'm going to leave and try to come back on. So we'll just do the proclamation. So the proclamation is congratulating Community Action Board on its 55th anniversary and acknowledging its executive director, Maria Elena de la Garza, her staff, tireless work, and invaluable contributions to the city. So with that, as you know, proclamations have lots and lots of a wherethis, but I'm only going to read a few wherethis. And so, whereas Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, Inc., better known as CAB, was founded in 1965 as part of President Johnson's War on Poverty Initiative. And whereas CAB's goal is to eliminate poverty and create social change through advocacy and essential services. And whereas CAB focuses on serving, serving the diverse, underprivileged community of Santa Cruz County and Pahravale. And whereas CAB achieves its mission through four program areas that aid with income and employment, homelessness, prevention and intervention, community building, and immigration services. And now therefore, I, Rebecca J. Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, on behalf of the City Council hereby congratulate Community Action Board on its 55th anniversary and acknowledge the, its executive director, Maria Elena de la Garza, and her staff, tirelessly work and invaluable contributions to the city and county with wishes for continued success in all their future endeavors. And I suspect Maria Elena or somebody else will have some words to say, and so you are on.
I thank you so much, Mayor Garcia and City Council. You can see that we are socially distancing in my office. We have Helen Nguyen Story and Baspar Villa and my hubby Mark with us today, and other directors on the line. But we want to just share our gratitude to the city of Watsonville for all your support, your continued support and acknowledgement of our work. We do this work together, and it's an honor and a privilege to be of service in our community. And like you said, Mayor Garcia, Garcia, like you just said about somebody else, I'm homegrown. And many of us who serve in CAB are homegrown, and then we. So thank you for your support. Thank you for the recognition. I want to thank our staff for their tirelessly commitment to this community. And I want to thank our board and many of you, Aurelio, who is actively on our board, Lowell, who sits on our finance committee, Trina, who, who has sat on our finance committee, and the rest of our city council members who have so actively supported our work. Mil gracias adelante, and we will continue doing everything we can to support the success of our community. Thank you.
Well, Maria Elena, it looks like you stopped talking, and of course, I didn't hear a word you said. So I'm going to go to Facebook later on to watch the recording. And so with that, Trina, if I could have you take over to start with reports to the council. And I'm going to leave and try to come back, and hopefully I'll be able to hear you there. Okay? So are you okay? Just wait to say you heard. Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so our next part on the agenda is going to be our city manager's update with Matthew Huppaker. And it's no action that will be required, but we'd like to share his news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and pull up my screen here, bear with me. Okay, can everybody see my screen? Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. I appreciate the update, an opportunity to keep you apprised of the many efforts and programs moving forward. And the city of Watsonville admits the ongoing pandemic and a number of challenges that we continue to, to work through. So as you had heard earlier this evening, we are starting to experience a nationwide uptick in cases across the country in the coronavirus. The country has averaged more than 71,000 new coronavirus cases per day over the past week, the most in any seven-day period since the start of the pandemic. About 8.7 million confirmed cases now throughout the United States. And here locally, we're seeing about 2,821 cases in the county as of today. Of those, 2,589 have recovered, 2,007 active cases that are still ongoing. And unfortunately, we have now reached the milestone of 25 deaths. Nearly half of those, again, were attributed to the Watsonville Post-Acute Center. And our thoughts and prayers continue to go out to the families and many community members that are being affected by that significant outbreak at that facility. About 1,600 cases are attributed to Watsonville, that's of the county total. That means that Watsonville makes up about 56% of the county's total cases. And the largest age group continues to be 20 years to 34-year-olds, with the majority of those exposures occurring with close contact through gatherings largely outside of the workplace. And as we know, the coronavirus has continued to impact communities of color throughout California and the country, for that matter. And Latinos are 62% of all cases within Santa Cruz County. In contrast to the trends that are occurring in other parts of the county, other parts of the country, excuse me, this morning, county health officials announced that the state is moving Santa Cruz County to the orange tier, which is defined as moderate, allowing for expanded indoor activities and indoor capacity at 50%, which is an increase from, from the current restrictions, as well as allowing for bars with outdoor capacity only, and that includes bars that are not serving food. The shift to the orange tier is attributed to Santa Cruz County continuing to meet the state's metrics when it comes to positivity rate, total cases, and cases per 100,000. And the news came down just this morning that based on those metrics, Watson, Watsonville and Santa Cruz County would be moving into this less restrictive tier. Previously restricted sectors such as amusement parks, family entertainment centers, non-essential offices, and live audience sports may open with modifications. And a number of those modifications and guidance can be found on the state's reopening website. Although movement to the orange tier is a sign of reduced disease transmission in the community, COVID-19 cases are rising nationally, as I mentioned previously, and are expected to increase locally as we move into the winter months. Residents are advised to continue wearing face coverings, practice social distancing, and most importantly, avoid gathering in large groups, which has been attributed to the majority of the spread in Watsonville and throughout the county. As we approach Halloween, we continue to support the South County Saves Lives Initiative with a focused campaign for the Halloween season. Halloween activities are organized according to their level of risk, ranging from lower to very high-risk activities. And I want to make clear that the state guidance from the California Department of Public Health, as well as our local county health official, while they are not prohibiting trick-or-treating, we are also not encouraging it. And I want to make clear that it falls within the higher-risk category. The very high-risk category, which is not permitted by state and local orders, includes large gatherings or attended crowded parties with the exchange of food and, and treats within those larger groups are prohibited. However, the state has not prohibited trick-or-treating. And I'll talk a bit more here in a minute about guidance we're providing to ensure that if community members choose to do so, that they do so safely. We know most people in our community will follow the safety guidelines, but we have to acknowledge that there will be some that do choose to trick-or-treat, even if it is high-risk. Our team has developed printable door hangers so that trick-or-treaters would know whether or not a home is wanting to participate in trick-or-treating this year. Of course, a simple, a simple turning off of your lights is also an age-old tradition of those that are not interested in participating. But we believe the door hangers will help to both protect those residing in the home that don't wish to participate in trick-or-treating, as well as those that engage in that activity this year. The city of Watsonville is following state-issued guidelines, and this is not meant to encourage a high-risk activity, but simply a tool to help everyone be safe during this Halloween holiday. Right after Halloween, our community will celebrate the traditional Dia de los Muertos. This year, we can expect this celebration to be very different than it has in years past. Cemeteries in town have announced they will be closed for Dia de los Muertos between October 31st through November 2nd. We encourage our residents to continue to honor those that have passed with their loved ones at home. Perhaps build an altar with special memories, visit the cemetery before or after the closures occur, and you can participate in the many activities available virtually throughout town. Continuing with the holiday theme, I want to share a campaign that we will be building in the next few days. Let's give thanks to essential workers serving in our community. Submit a photo, name, occupation, and your phone number to enter a giveaway sponsored by the Paharo Valley Community Group. You can win a coupon book of $100 each. This effort is one of our ways of thanking those essential workers in our community and to continue raising awareness that COVID-19 is still here even through the holiday season. And we have to be extra careful to protect those that we love. So I encourage all of you to participate in that. We know we have many essential workers in our community that continue to serve throughout the pandemic. We have great news on, on the funding front and outreach effort. Over the past couple of weeks, city staff have submitted a number of grant applications on behalf of a number of our community partners. In fact, one of these, we just received word this afternoon, and this was a grant that the city council approved a few weeks ago, was the Campusino Caravan. We had applied for about $60,000 in funding on behalf of the caravan to continue supporting the important outreach and support efforts that they've been providing. And we received word this afternoon from the county that $30,000 had been awarded to help support those very important efforts going forward. There was also a 15,000 grant that was funded for outreach of ag workers during the holiday season. The city of Watsonville was awarded 5,000 for our continued COVID outreach. And the PV Community Group Save Lives Communication Task Force, which is connected with a number of the campaigns we've been working on, was awarded 95,000 to continue our focused outreach efforts in Watsonville. California is the first state to require mandatory food scrap diversion from resident, residential and businesses by January 2022. Cities throughout the state are in stages of developing an implementation plan to tackle organic disposal. And by 2025, cities must reduce 75% of landfill organic waste and increase edible food recovery by 20%. These initiatives are aligned to meet California's goal of 40% methane reduction by 2030. The good news is that organic food scrap collection services continue to be expanding in Watsonville. In 2019, a total of 830 tons of organic food waste, and I know that's hard to fathom, it's a lot of organic food waste, was diverted from the landfill from local Watsonville businesses. Extending the service to residents is the next step towards meeting the state's environmental goals. And our community will be hearing a lot more about that in the coming days and weeks. In addition to the food scrap expansion, we are increasing outreach efforts for our home composting program. Since the shelter-in-place order came into effect and restaurants had to close their doors, residents have been cooking at home more, and inevitably, more food scraps were going into the trash as a consequence. You may, may have heard about the sourdough. You may may have heard about the sourdough baking craze that has been very popular over the last several months. All of that is contributing to more waste in our landfill. To adapt to these changes and to prepare the community for the upcoming food scrap collection mandate, Public Works Outreach staff went virtual with the home composting workshops and removed the ten dollar cost for the compost bin. Since this July, there are now three hundred and twenty four Watsonville residents that have started diverting their food scraps from ending in the landfill to instead going into their home compost bin, where it will be turned into a new nutritious, rich soil. We continue to provide ongoing rental assistance, both now directly with our own in-house emergency rental assistance program, as well as with our community partners, including the Community Action Board, who you heard from earlier this evening. We have received ninety applications thus far for rental assistance. Staff is in the process now of moving those applications through the process, and we hope on providing our first checks to landlords by the end of October. Again, these are payments that go directly to the landlord to assist renters that have been impacted by COVID nineteen in a variety of ways. CAB has spent a hundred thousand dollars on rental assistance in the county with another hundred and sixty thousand committed of a total of over six hundred thousand earmarked for rental assistance. As you heard from our city clerk earlier, we're now a week away from the the election. As a reminder, we want to encourage everyone to vote. You've heard from many of our council members this evening about how and how important that act is. You can do so in a variety of ways. One is to mail in your ballot. You can drop off your ballot at a drop box at three locations throughout the county, as well as coming down to the Watsonville City Clerk's Office or going to the Santa Cruz County Clerk's Office to deliver your ballot in person. And of course, if you choose to do so, we encourage you to maintain social distancing and make sure you bring your mask with you. Like many of the holiday and special events we're offering this year, they all look a little different than in years past. We didn't want the kids in our community to miss out on some fun in a good old fashioned sugar rush this Halloween. So in partnership with Parks and Community Services, Watsonville PD and the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office will be offering a drive through trunk or treat on Friday, October thirtieth at Ramsey Park, while supplies last, and that's between four thirty and seven thirty. So we encourage you to come out and participate. Our operations continue moving towards partial reopening in phases. Our library team has been making preparations over the last several weeks to reopen indoor services as soon as mid-November as as well as the rest of our economic sectors that are moving into the orange tier. And there will be a number of safeguards to protect the public and staff as part of this move to reopen our libraries. Of course, we have been providing curbside delivery library services throughout the pandemic, and this would take it one step further to allow members of the community to enjoy our libraries indoors once again. And so more information will be coming out about that in the coming weeks. I wanted to pause to really highlight and underscore the significant amount of work and and attention that's been given to the twenty twenty census. It's hard to think of more challenges or hurdles or roadblocks along the way to really ensure that we were able to achieve a complete count in twenty twenty compared to ten years ago. Our dedicated census staff went above and beyond to count all members of the community, ultimately reaching a response rate of seventy point nine percent, just a little shy of our seven seventy three percent count in twenty ten. The COVID nineteen pandemic made our mission challenging, and the continued changes from the US Census Bureau in-person enumeration efforts and deadlines added yet another hurdle to an already challenging task. These unprecedented challenges resulted in lower response rates across the country, including within Santa Cruz County. Even as the pandemic forced all in-person census outreach efforts to a complete halt, we pivoted our entire campaign to phone banking, email campaigns, social media, and paid digital advertising. The the team used creative approaches to try to reach our hard to count populations through farm worker outreach in the fields, visiting laundromats and grocery stores, setting up a weekly booth at the farmer's market, and continued with outreach at the flea market, Second Harvest Food Bank distribution sites, and PVUSD lunch site distributions as well. We also organized a census bike and car caravan, gave away ice cream and incentives and gift cards to those that completed their census, held chalk art parties, and resulted in beautiful census chalk murals throughout the city, all in an effort to bring the census front and center in our community. Through these tactics, we were able to reach hundreds of thousands of hard to count people despite the widespread shelter in place orders. Efforts like this helped us to get closer to our twenty ten response rate amid a political firestorm, global pandemic, wildfires, economic turmoil, and a shortened deadline. We continued to push to ensure Watsonville was counted. I want to especially thank Liz Padilla for her outstanding efforts to lead our census outreach efforts and for giving it one hundred percent every day until the deadline. Her leadership and our team's efforts have been recognized across the state and really should be applauded. So I wanted to again share my contact information with the community. I always appreciate hearing from our community members on whatever topic may be important to you or that you may be concerned about. You can reach me at citymanager@cityofwatsonville.org, and please don't hesitate to reach out. But before I conclude today, I wanted to provide an opportunity for Chief Honda to provide an update on the violence that we experienced over the weekend. There's clearly a number of community comments and council comments about the activities over the weekend, and I thought it was appropriate to give Chief Honda an opportunity to to give an update to to the community on that front. And so Chief Honda, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, City Council, city staff and members of the public, as you all know, we had a very violent and tragic weekend. On Saturday night, right around five o'clock, we had a shooting on Front Street that resulted in a homicide. An adult man lost his life. And then several hours later, we had another shooting on Main Street across from Ramsey Park, and another young man was shot and lost his life there. And then shortly after that, we had a third shooting on Blackbird Circle. Unfortunately, that man did not die, and he was treated and will survive his injuries. Very terrible weekend. And before I go further, I just want to say my condolences to the families of those who lost their lives. And also going back from the prior week to the young lady who lost her life to domestic violence. I just want everyone that's listening to this tonight to remember to keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they deal with this terribly terrible tragedy and the loss of a loved one. So the weekend, like I said, was very busy. After the first shooting, we had to call back our third watch patrol teams early. All our detectives came in from home as well as as well as other staff and some of our professional employees had to come in to help manage the first crime scene. And then the second homicide happened. And our Santa Cruz County Anti-Crime Team, which is our regional task force, which we do have officers assigned to, they actually responded back also from their homes to help us investigate the second homicide. And then the third, the third shooting on Blackbird Circle, we had to request the assistance from Santa Cruz PD, which they came down and helped us manage the crime scene. So at this time, we don't have any information that would lead us to believe that all these instances are connected in any certain way. But we do believe at this time that they are gang related. And these are ongoing investigations. And so we're working with all our allied agencies to determine what's behind all of this and if this is just an anomaly or not. But I tell you, I'd like to talk about some of the challenges we're facing. This year, of course, twenty twenty, the pandemic, the resulting economic crisis, a lot of our prevention and intervention programs have really suffered. And and just speaking to some of the comments made in the public and our other nonprofits out there, they know how it's really affected them too. Programs that we partner with, such as our communist intervention program or prevention program with PVPSA, our youth dialogues, partnering with United Way and the Youth Prevention or Task Force now, and our Agua Con La Trote program with our partnership with Community Action Board. A lot of these programs were either suspended or reduced significantly due to the pandemic. Not only that, because of the staffing reductions we suffered, not only because of the budget cuts, but also because of retirements and people leaving for various reasons. Our staffing levels are down to what we were over five years ago. But having said that, despite these setbacks, we still have done a lot to focus on violence and youth violence. We collected over a hundred and fifteen guns taken off the street in twenty twenty alone. Our Special Investigation Investigations Unit has seized over two hundred guns since their inception. We were able to maintain our Special Investigations Unit staffing, our detective staffing, and maintained our commitment to the Santa Cruz Anti-Crime Team staffing. And with our commitment to youth, we also were able to maintain our communist program. We didn't get to expand it like we wanted to, but we are committed to maintaining that partnership with PVPSA to keep our kids out of the criminal justice system. And I also want to compliment our Parks and Community Services and our Police Activities League, our PAL, who despite all these setbacks have still maintained programming to provide free programming to our young community members throughout Watsonville. So moving forward this weekend, we are calling back additional resources and officers to patrol the streets to be visible that we ensure we have a peaceful holiday weekend. And with regards to investigations, we are working with our allied agencies in Monterey County and Santa Cruz County to not only investigate and solve these horrendous crimes, but also ensure that we can prevent more of this happening in the future. And with that, that concludes my report, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Chief Honda. Appreciate that update. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Okay, first I want to say to Chief Honda, we've been there before, but with the community support, we were able to support those that needed it so that the violence would be basically, it was deleted. And I know we've done it before, and we will do it again. So thank you for your leadership on that. And so at this time, I will be taking comments, questions from the council members. And when we finish with the council members, then we'll open it up to the public for any comments they might have in terms of our city manager's report. So we'll start off with Lowell. Do you have any comments or questions?
Just a couple of questions and a comment. You know, the food waste, food scraps and waste, you know, this is going to be kind of an expensive deal to have an additional can and additional pickup. Are we getting get any support from the state? Or is this just another another unfunded mandate? You know, I want to do all the recycling I can. And as an ag teacher, I got to teach composting, and I have a compost pile at my home. And I also do the yard waste recovery. And so are we going to get any help from the state regarding food waste removal? And I'll go on to my second question or my second comment at this time. The census, you know, I think staff did a great job on the census, but the public didn't do such a good job on the census. And I'm worried that we will not get the kind of funding that we deserve and need, and that many people have gone uncounted. And you know, that may be water under the bridge, but we need to always recall that we were undercounted ten years ago, and now we're going to be uncounted again. And so when people want more services, we need to look around and say, hey, everybody counts, but not everybody got counted. And so I'm hoping that, you know, in the future, and that's a long time away, another ten years for census, that we can dial this in a little bit better. And I also kind of worry about election turnout. And if thirty percent of the folks remain uncounted for census, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that there's a better turnout election wise in the city as well. And I just thank Chief Honda for his remarks. And yes, Mayor Garcia and I have lived through very difficult times in the past. I remember when I was first hired as a teacher in eighty nine, the the very difficult gang conditions that existed and prevention is the the high standard that we should promote, but that also requires community cooperation. And we just ask for community cooperation wherever we can. Thanks.
Thank you. So Matt, can you respond to those questions?
Sure, just real briefly, Councilman Rehurst, unfortunately, like many of the mandates that come down from Sacramento, it comes with no funding support whatsoever. So we will be working through how best to meet those mandates in a way that doesn't create a financial burden. I will say, one of the benefits of diverting that organic waste means it's less that we're having to haul down to Monterey as part of our with the our local landfill now being closed, we're having to transport all of that waste out of town. So the less we have to do, the 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 less we're having to pay for both transportation and offloading of that waste. So there is a bit of a silver lining there. And can you remind me of what your second question was?
We can't hear you, Lowell.
Oh, sorry about that. We do have a mute button here, don't we? I need to learn how to use that one as well. There's a lot of people pushing buttons, but using them as a different different set of skills. Regarding the census, you know, it's disturbing to know that almost thirty percent of the folks in the community weren't counted, and and that that weighs heavy on us economically, and it also has implications socially as well, that folks just won't get the kind of service that they really need. And and what can we do to? And I don't want to have to wait another ten years for a new census, but you know, what lessons can we learn from the census and how can we apply the those lessons to the future and the implications that, you know, many people won't vote because they didn't participate in the census either.
So I I think we can't overstate the fact that there were an unprecedented number of hurdles that stood in the way of completing a fair count as part of the twenty twenty census. Having said that, I think we learned a lot through this process with very effective outreach techniques, building a strong coalition of community partners to engage with our community where they live, where they work, where they spend their time throughout the week. And I think that those efforts will absolutely help in future census efforts. And despite the fact that we fell short of the twenty ten count by just a small margin, I can tell you, there are a lot of cities that fell significantly short of their twenty ten count because of the current environment, because of community members not feeling safe and participating. So we can, we can feel proud of what we're able to accomplish with the total count and certainly things that we've learned that we can carry forward to future census counts as well.
Thank you very much. And kudos again to Chief Honda.
Okay, Trina, you have any comments or questions?
I I'll refrain at this time. I can always check in with Matt later, and that gives us a little bit of chance to certainly forward. Thank you.
And thank you very much for taking over for me for a few minutes. Okay, moving on to Paco. Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, a comment. I might have missed this, but did we specify where the Dropbox location, all right?
We did specify those, and you could find those on our city website as well. I know there's one, there's one near Twin Lakes Church and Cabrillo College. And I'm sure the city clerk can chime in and give the locations of the other two.
Yes, in Watsonville, we have one right here on the parking lot of the Romo property, right on Rodriguez Street, a block up from our building here. And then there's one at the old courthouse on Freedom Boulevard by the health clinic. Those, and I believe there's one at the playgrounds also.
And if people, you know, we've heard of what the California Republican Party has been doing with the fake boxes and stuff. If people don't feel confident to leave them in the boxes, we can just take them straight to City Hall and leave them.
They can, yes, they can bring them to our office. They can also take them at the Watsonville Library. We have a ballot box there too. So if they don't want to drive up here. And on the weekend, we will also have ballot boxes so that they can, as they drive in, they don't even have to come into our office. They can just drop them there.
Great. And then just to sort of echo with what Councilwoman Hearst was saying, I, I think I'd love to hear a sort of a report back on the entire process of the census from Liz. I just want to thank Liz and your, and your team, your staff, the mayor. I know Cab also played a big role in helping us with the census. And so just want to thank all our partners for doing that. But I sort of want to, you know, I agree with what the city manager said that, you know, I think seventy percent in spite of federal government that did not really want to have a fair process and fulfill its constitutional duty. I think seventy percent is, is not ideal, but it's still great. And you know, I don't put the blame directly on the public because, you know, we had, we had the, the citizenship question, we had, you know, the government trying to, you know, cut back the dates and they did everything in their power to really disenfranchise communities like Watsonville, which is really a sad state of affairs in twenty twenty. And so I just would really like to know more about the entire process and we can get a report back. I think that'd be great. And just to be able to ask more questions.
Okay. Thank you for that request, Paco. Moving on, Aurelio, you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. No, no questions, just comments. See, even in the future, we can reduce the city manager's time on his report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Ari, any comments or questions?
I like Aurelio's sense of humor. Okay, you know, I want to appreciate Dave, Chief Honda, for his report and for all the folks in the police department who deal with these tragedies. It's a, it's a difficult thing to do. I know as a teacher and having dealt with children and parents and families during tragedies, there it, it's just difficult. And, and you still have to do your job. So I wanted to thank him and appreciate that. I had a question about the orange. I feel like we're not in orange in our part of the county, but they're in orange in their part of the county. And so they're not differentiating that. And I'm a little bit worried that this is going to give us the wrong message here in Watsonville. Because I don't see that our numbers are like North County's numbers in this sense. And I'm not just talking about the tragedy, you know, of, of our seniors at the center. So I'm, I'm curious, Matt, in the discussion that you had about that. So I'll leave it as a general question.
Yeah. So Councilmember Parker, we, we share those concerns. We know that we continue to disproportionately be carrying the majority of the cases in Santa Cruz County. And the state has recognized that there are a number of counties that have portions of their community that are taking the brunt disproportionately of the pandemic. So as part of this new four-tiered staging plan, they do have a requirement that counties submit a plan for how they plan on investing resources, attention, outreach to disproportionately advantage members of, of the community. It's part of their equity metric is what they call it. So they were required to do so as part of that effort. They've been coordinating closely with, with my staff and county health as part of that plan. A lot of it's embedded in the South County Safe Lives initiatives that I've mentioned earlier this evening. But I want to be very clear, we are far from being out of the woods. There's a very likely chance that we're going to continue to see the numbers go up as the weather cools and the rain start, just as we're seeing in other parts of the country. And there's a very good chance we can move back into the more restrictive tiers in the not too distant future, red or purple. So folks need to remain vigilant. The holidays are definitely a concern, starting with Halloween. We're encouraging people to take appropriate actions to protect themselves because we continue to see higher numbers than the rest of the county. And we don't want to end up in the same position that the rest of the country is now moving towards.
Thank you, Matt, for that. Felipe, do you have any comments or questions?
My only question is with the composting, you know, after we retrieve all the, or after, is there going to be any opportunities to be able to do any partnerships with people that have anaerobic digesters? Where we can, you know, that people that do biofuel, where we can do a trade off for biofuel or do anything like that?
There may be an opportunity for a good old fashioned trade as you're creating your own soil. I know that Steve Pomassano and our utilities team will be bringing a fuller update on the program. It's going to be a huge lift. So you're going to be hearing a lot more about it in the coming weeks and months. And we can certainly bring more information around what options you might have as we move into that. Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, thank you. I have a comment, actually some good news in terms of the census. I recently had an opportunity to participate in a virtual meeting with Congressman Jimmy Panetta. And I mentioned to him about my disappointment that we weren't even able to reach the twenty ten rate of seventy three percent. And he said that Watsonville actually should be proud of the rate that we have raised because he said district wide, he says, we are at a higher rate than twenty ten. So he was congratulating us for doing what even we did. So that I just wanted to share that. And so with that, now we'll go out to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to share some thoughts on the reports giving to us right now? Please raise your hand.
Go ahead, Ellie.
Hi, yeah. So my first question is on who's running your social media? Because I ask questions that never get answered. For example, when does the survey for the downtown planning close? I think it'd be important to know for community when that survey closes. And in regards to Ari's comments and Matt that you agreed, I come back to those posters, right? And I'd like to see if you could add something to it. If you could add that you are, what you yourself said, let me see if I could get it real quick. Where you say, this is not meant to encourage a high risk activity, but simply a tool to help everyone be safe. I think that if you put that on the poster, that would make a huge difference. And it would make it clear that you're not encouraging it because by the way that you guys posted it, it makes it, and with us being announced on orange, a lot of people are going to feel like you guys are encouraging it like it's cool to do. So if you could add that onto that poster, that would make a huge difference that you're not encouraging it. And I think that it's very important for our community. I also wanted to ask a question about the compost program only because I don't know anything about it. I personally would, would do it, but I don't need soil. Do you guys take that? How does, how does that work? I just have more questions about it because I don't understand it. And then just off of the top of your head, do you happen to know what tier is required for schools to reopen? And then lastly, do you know when the next CASAS meeting is? Because I've attended two of them, but I can't seem to find information. And it might be really simple. And I just don't know where to look. I can't find information on the next meeting. So if you could provide me with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for those recommendations. I think those are great recommendations you made, Ellie. Okay, moving on, is there anybody else who wishes to share thoughts? Please raise your hand.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we make sure that somebody follows up with Ellie with some of those questions too about the House meetings and stuff like that?
Yes, we're happy to follow up on those. And just for the benefit of the community, the downtown specific plan survey closes on November sixteenth and it can be found on our website.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council, make some comments about the Matt's report?
Go ahead, Mary.
Mary Beth?
Yes, hi. Yes, hi. I, this is a public safety matter. At Sutton and California Street, we have had an awful lot of near fatalities because cars speed down Sutton Street. And of course, Callahan Park is right there. And we got little kids running across the crosswalk, sometimes with no adults. So what I'd like to know is, can we get a three-way stop sign put there?
Mary, what I'd like you to do is either email me or Matt about that question and we will respond to you because we do have a program that helps neighborhoods. So please email either Matt or myself or both of us. Okay?
Sure, I can do that. The next thing is, I'm in a wheelchair. And believe it or not, just this year, I've been hit three times. When I was in a crosswalk and, you know, crossing lawfully with a signal or whatever. That seems outrageous. I know I've heard that there's only five police officers on duty at any given time, which seems outrageous for a city this size. I'm just wondering, is there any way to start handing out some speeding tickets or tickets for violating crosswalks? I was lucky those three times. I got bruised pretty badly, but I didn't get, you know, seriously injured. And I just am afraid of the next time, you know? I've been lucky up till now.
It does sound like you've been very lucky, Mary Beth. And again, please email either Matt or myself about your concerns and we'll get back to you. So thank you for participating.
Do you have any insight on when we might get more police officers? I know.
You'll, you'll need to, this isn't a time for us to answer questions to the public. But if you want questions answered, please email a Matt or myself.
It was a public safety thing. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not. It was just in terms of response to Matt's presentation. Okay, is there anybody else that wants to address us in terms of their thoughts or comments on the presentation given to us?
Kathleen, go ahead. I, I just wanted to give a brief bit of thanks to the actual census workers who went out. I have a friend who did that, not in Watsonville, but in North Monterey County. And it was a very, very challenging job to go to people's homes. She saw open drug use. She saw she was yelled at quite a bit of time, all the animosity toward the government. It's not just about not wanting to be counted, but also people who are just angry at anybody who seems to be from the government. She was actually threatened twice with weapons. So you know, besides all the organizing, the people who were the foot soldiers of that endeavor also deserve a lot of thanks and congratulations for their good work.
Thank you for those comments, Kathleen. It's appreciated. Okay, moving on, is there anybody else that would like to address the council, I mean, address the comments made by the report?
Go ahead, Steve.
Chris, but hi. I just wanted to say I agree with Councilmember Fernandez's point about the digesters. And I think that in light of this, this food scrap program, that would be a good way to start transitioning to a green economy and energy independence for Watsonville. I think that's especially important when we think of the lack of support we've had from the federal government. So the more we can move to be self-sufficient and green, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. We do need to be more green, Chris. Thank you for those comments. Moving on, is there anybody else that would like to share their thoughts?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, I want to concur with Chris. He's absolutely right on the money as far as the process of us wasting less food and using it for compost. And I also want to congratulate Ellie's comments. I totally agree with her. She's absolutely right of the money. Chief Honda, your presentation basically makes a good argument for voting yes on fifteen. And I hope everybody listening will do so because we need that kind of money, not just for Cabrillo College, but also for the city of Watsonville. I also want to point out to everybody that while going door to door, I also asked people if they filled out the census while canvassing votes for Cabrillo Community College District, District Seven. And I got a very positive response from virtually everybody. I didn't mind. I didn't encounter any hostility. I'm not sure why. But to the fact that I brought the question up in the process of campaigning door to door for Cabrillo, maybe that it was couched in the right way. I, I also saw some really, really awful conditions, which I reiterated to you in terms of how people are living in, in Watsonville, including boats that are in dry dock on land, carports, garages, no, no indoor plumbing, no toilets. Yeah, we have a real problem, folks. We really do. And there's a lot of code enforcement that we're either looking the other way or just isn't getting done, or we don't have enough people to, to do it. We really need housing for people who are low income. We need it desperately. I also want to say that I, while I'm in favor of a drive-through Halloween, naturally, I would prefer that it didn't involve auto exhaust. But it is something for children and their, and their families to be able to enjoy Halloween. I know that I'm going to be staying home Halloween and I hope the other candidates running for office. And yes, I'm talking to you, Aurelio and Felipe and Mr. Gomez, possibly should just stay at home in order to set a good example because we don't need to have a lot of parties. The spread of COVID nineteen is, is quite obvious that it is serious and it's very serious in Watsonville. And we need to recognize that people who are getting together just informally in groups of any more than three or four are, they're putting everybody else at risk. So I appreciate the words of the city manager and the members of the council in order that we can get a handle on this horrific pandemic. And no, Trump is not right. We're not rounding the corner. And Biden is right. We're learning how to die with it. Two hundred and twenty thousand people plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for your words. Okay, is there anybody else that wants to talk about their thoughts about this report?
There was one, one other hand. Okay, hold on one second. Yes, Vanessa, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm just wondering, I may have missed information, but my family and I are really, really into Halloween. We love Halloween. We go all out every year, but we do want to be safe this year. And so we're wondering where those door hangers are available so we can put those up just to let the community know that we will not be participating this year in handing out candy in the interest of keeping folks safe. I may have missed it. And I'm just wondering where we can, we can get those. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Matt, can you tell her about downloading?
Yes, they'll be available on the city's website for download and printing. They'll be available, should be by tomorrow. I believe they're already up on the city's website as we speak.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak on this report?
Takashi? Takashi, this is your turn to speak.
Hello, good evening. I'm Takashi. In regard to coronavirus pandemic, I'd like to share with you what I have seen for the past five months or so. I have gone to the beach at Palm Beach almost every day to pick up the trash on the beach. And I'm, I'm just one of five or six people who have been picking up the trash on the beach. And on weekends, there were many people on the beach, Saturdays and Sundays during the summer. And most of them did not wear masks and they didn't keep social distancing. And there, there are not so many people on the beach on weekdays. But I'm really happy to see the kids, small kids playing with the suns and with water in the ocean. But I'm just concerned that more, many people, they, they didn't wear masks. They don't wear masks. And the people are coming not only from the city, Watsonville city, but also from far away from Silicon Valley. Those areas. And I have also seen many farm workers who are not wearing masks while they are working on both sides of the, on the, in the field, both sides of the roads towards Palm Beach. So I'm concerned about that. roads towards Palm Beach. So I'm concerned about that. And one most comments on Chief Honda's, uh, talk. I really appreciated his leadership. I remember five years ago, we had, uh, in Watsonville, we had ten homicide cases for one year. But after he, he came to Watsonville, the following year, the, we had zero homicide cases. So I really appreciate, I just want to express my appreciation for his leadership. That's all.
Thank you, Takashi, and thank you so much for going out to Palm Beach and doing the cleanup because I go out there often also, but I don't clean up. I just enjoy the ocean air and the sand. Well, thank you for your comments. Uh, anybody else want to address the council at this time?
There's no one else on this time, Mayor.
Very good. Okay. So we have concluded that report and our, uh, next report is a report by Kathleen on the Watson Beyonce Project. Kathleen, are you there? Kathleen?
I am promoting her. Good. Thank you. Uh, and I'm hoping to share my screen. Do you see my screen?
One second, Kathleen. I'm promoting you as a panelist. So it's going to take a second. You don't mute it?
Okay, I think I'm ready. Um, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, this is our celebration in lieu of a dedication. Yes, so sad. Um, so I wanted to, um, this is not old news to us. We, um, we were slated to come see city council to give you an update in April when all of our lives were upended. And I'm grateful to be here tonight to officially thank you, as I know some of you are turning out and others of you are up for reelection. So thank you for your vote of confidence in the spring of two thousand nineteen that allowed us to proceed with this vision. There are many people to thank for the successful execution of the strawberry picker. And these are two of Rinaldi Talon Marbles employees who installed the work. I expect that most of you have seen this banner underneath the strawberry picker. We now get to add granite rock and granite construction to our list of sponsors. The strawberry picker was fabricated by the hands of over a hundred and eighty volunteers. And we are so proud of our community engagement efforts. Our in-between phases project was this glass on glass mosaic interpretation of a painting by Jaime Sanchez. And this project was made possible through a grant from the California, um, California for the Arts Council. And the grant was co-written by the city of Watsonville and Pahrump Valley Arts. As all of us, government agencies, businesses, nonprofits, and individuals have had to adapt to the as we not only have to limit the number of people who can come inside the space, but, um, offering them by appointment protect ourselves and our community from the spread of COVID-19. is limiting factor for people who don't have access to technology or Our solution was to offer a summer community service camp for youth. simply find the process of signing up online, um, daunting. We had eight very dedicated youth who came to Watts, who came to the Museo four nights a week, the entire summer. So to help with that, in an effort to increase our community connections, They gained some really impressive skills and were able to accomplish a massive amount of work we've just finished making this mobile mosaic studio, which will be taken to farmers market starting next week. while enjoying each other's company from six feet apart. At the end of camp, eight adults came together over a period of four weeks to finish up the apple picker. We're still looking for local artists to submit images for the horizontal sections of the garage. This drone footage was taken by Inspire Studios, who is working on a documentary film for us. Uh, we'll be able to take them through the end of December. And interested people should contact us at watsonvillebrillante.com. Last week, at the unveiling of the apple picker, we came together for a socially distanced photo opportunity with our youth. The image to the right is a sketch of a potential image for the final vertical section. Um, you'll see those four kids sitting up there together rather closely. They are cousins. They're in a family pod. And, um, I'd lastly like to finish that meeting with you here tonight is our community celebration, since we won't be having a dedication party. So they're being together is not unusual. But the photo on the right documents a moment of pure joy for me because We wanted to thank all of our volunteers and especially essential workers in our community who are keeping us fed and safe. the youth were standing at the bottom of the mural, looking up, and To end my presentation, I want to end with a quote by one of our most valued staff members, Brianna Flores. they were just in awe of what they had accomplished. And we are so very, very proud of them and happy to have She's a young woman who went away to college and came back to Watsonville with a desire to work in the nonprofit realm worked with them. You may recall that Armanita is the next approved image. to help give back to our community. She said, "I wanted to get involved with community arts and empowerment when I saw the images of the artwork. And we've already begun laying out the paper pattern so that we can begin tile fabrication. We're going to be open by appointment only These are the people who live here. It is my family. It is my community. This art, which has involved the efforts of many people, is important because it shows that everyday people, we are celebrating them and we literally look up to them." Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report, uh, Kathleen. And that is so, so much work. It's just amazing that under these conditions, you're able to still bring community together uh, to do, to do this at this time, because I only see one council member. Uh, if there's any council members that would like to, uh, ask questions or make comments to Kathleen, we can do that at this time. But you'll just have to speak up because I can't see you. I, I only see Trina. So I'll just start with Trina. Trina, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Um, yes, I, I fear this beautiful work. Um, I know that we're looking for a full representation of this community. So I know more conversation will take place for, um, the work that we bring downtown. And look forward to seeing a, a lot more of this and the experience that it provides with the youth. I know that we have a light in art in this community and, and it's disproportionate. We'll, we'll discover that as we go further into our agenda this evening and, um, that we really value all that you've been able to do, to do, to bring in, to contribute to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paco, do you have anything to add?
I wanted to echo what, uh, my colleague, uh, Trina just mentioned about the beauty of the work. We appreciate uh, how you've worked to bring in community, Kathleen. Um, I, I guess I was just running more of a, uh, moving forward, what's, what's the, uh, the timeline? What are some milestones that we're looking at, uh, moving forward?
Um, the idea is to do twelve hundred square feet every six months, which is what you see right there. That's a year's worth of work and twenty-four hundred square feet. Uh, the next image we're expecting to put up is the double vertical on Rodriguez. And that will take us, um, a year to complete. So this time next year, we will see the completed Armanita. Um, we are wanting to start the color, the horizontal, uh, sections, but we've had a lot of challenges getting local artists to submit artwork. Um, so that's why we've been proceeding with the verticals.
And why do you perceive that we, you've been, uh, we've been having trouble, uh, getting more, uh, artists involved to submit?
I, um, it's unclear though, um, individual, like approaching individuals and asking them one-on-one to do, to give me work has been, um, has been, I have been successful in getting artists to submit that way. A general call for art has, has yielded very little, though this is not surprising. The same thing happens when PVA puts out a call for movable murals. You just kind of have to tap individuals. Part of our plan was to get high school students involved. And since COVID-19 has happened, um, it's been really challenging for the art teachers to, um, do community engagement activities.
Okay. And just my last question, um, I really love that piece you did with Jaime. I think it's, uh, quite beautiful. Um, will you, will there be more, uh, projects like that? And is there a way for, uh, community members to support uh, little projects like that, which I think are, uh, very beautiful. And I, I love to sort of just be in random places in town and maybe see those, you know, that, those type of artworks.
Thank you. Um, we, we do foresee every time we put up a piece, like we just finished the apple picker, we've had uh, four weeks of sort of downtime that in that downtime is when we can do small projects. Um, the funding for that one came from a grant and we just had not secured funding for another one. We would certainly like to do the other window at Ramsey. And I know that, uh, Nick at Parks and Recs has other, um, potential opportunities for, uh, placement of public art.
Thank you, Kathleen. And those are my questions, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Aurelio, any thoughts or questions?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, first of all, thank you, Kathleen, for your hard work and your efforts. Um, and also for engaging the community. Uh, I think that's a, uh, the biggest thank I need to give you is that actually you're out there engaging with the community. And, and Brianna is a good example of that. Um, uh, I see her in action at the Pahrump Valley Arts. Uh, I, I expect a lot more from her. Uh, she has a great potential, uh, to be a great leader within our community. Um, and so, uh, I think you're, you're helping her along the way to get to, to those goals. So, uh, I, I just wanted to acknowledge you for sometimes, uh, you don't see what you're creating until it blossoms. And I, I think, uh, this is a good example. Uh, the work that you've been putting together, but also the, the characters that you're building uh, along the way. And those are the young folks that you're, you're interfacing with, uh, and changing their lives. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Aurelio. Ari?
Yes, I, I wanted to say that, uh, I haven't been down to see it in person yet, but I just texted a few pictures and I was in awe. Because I thought, wow, as a classroom teacher, I've done some great, uh, projects, but to do something that, you know, it's a behemoth of, of art and can be seen for, and it's very impactful. Um, and, and I did want to mention, because I remember, uh, when you first came and, and, um, talked about this project. Um, you know, there's, there's so much richness and diversity here in our, with indigenous people from the Alone and Almamutzen, as well as, um, you know, our Filipino community and our Japanese community. I'm wondering if is it, has it been difficult to get people to, um, to portray the different, you know, the diverse groups that we've had here? Is that part of what's been going on with COVID and, and the pandemic? Is, uh, just moving forward with different things?
So, um, I, I'm glad you mentioned those two in particular. Armanita is a, she's coming next, and that's an indigenous person. And then, um, this is an image of an Asian. We're hoping that the last vertical is an Asian. Um, the horizontals is where we'll try to make sure we get everyone from the Middle Easterns, Easterners to the, um, to black people, to, um, more representation of the various Caucasian groups. But, um, as far as getting images for the horizontals, I don't believe it's so much, uh, COVID as it's, um, that when you put out a blanket invitation, that is, um, that has sort of like a contract attached to it. I think that's sort of daunting for people with, uh, limited language skill, you know, like when English isn't their first language. And, um, so we need to, we're, we're doing our targeted outreach to people that we know are artists and asking them to submit. And don't worry about the contract. We'll, um, we'll walk you through it. We'll talk you about, you know, how, what it means for us to use our, your image, that it's still your image, that you get paid for it, that it's a contract that protects both you and ourselves.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kathleen. I really appreciate that.
Okay, Felipe, you have any thoughts or comments? Felipe?
Yeah, no questions. I just want to echo what everybody else is saying, you know? It's beautiful work and I love that you're engaging, uh, young people and youth around the area. And you know, it's, uh, I, I want to tell you to keep up the good work that you're doing there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lowell, any thoughts, comments?
Well, like everyone else, I just want to thank Kathleen and her crew and, and all the donors and supporters and those who voted on the images. And I remember cutting tile in the foyer of the library early on and then taking my wife over to the Museo and, uh, and looking at the good work was going on. And just thank you for energizing the community, Kathleen, and your crew.
Thank you. Uh, Kathleen, thank you so much for your update and presentation. And I'm wondering at what point do you expect that you'll be coming back to the council to give us an update?
Whenever anyone wants me to.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be in touch. And thank you so much for your leadership on this beautiful, beautiful art project. It's going to bring more of a name to Watsonville. I know it will. Okay, moving on, uh, this is a time for the consent agenda. And so is there anybody in the public that would like to, uh, give some input on any consent agenda item? This is the time, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized. You don't mute it?
Okay, I think I'm ready. Um, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, this is our celebration in lieu of a dedication. Yes, so sad. Um, so I wanted to, um, this is not old news to us. We, um, we were slated to come see city council to give you an update in April when all of our lives were upended. And I'm grateful to be here tonight to officially thank you as I know some of you are turning out and others of you are up for reelection. So thank you for your vote of confidence in the spring of two thousand nineteen that allowed us to proceed with this vision. There are many people to thank for the successful execution of the strawberry picker. And these are two of Rinaldi Talon Marbles employees who installed the work. I expect that most of you have seen this banner underneath the strawberry picker. We now get to add granite rock and granite construction to our list of sponsors. The strawberry picker was fabricated by the hands of over a hundred and eighty volunteers. And we are so proud of our community engagement efforts. Our in-between phases project was this glass on glass mosaic interpretation of a painting by Jaime Sanchez. And this project was made possible through a grant from the California, um, California for the Arts Council. And the grant was co-written by the city of Watsonville and Pahrump Valley Arts. As all of us, government agencies, businesses, nonprofits, and individuals have had to adapt to the protect ourselves and our community from the spread of COVID-19, our solution was to offer a summer community service camp for youth. We had eight very dedicated youth who came to Watts, who came to the Museo four nights a week, the entire summer. They gained some really impressive skills and were able to accomplish a massive amount of work while enjoying each other's company from six feet apart. At the end of camp, eight adults came together over a period of four weeks to finish up the apple picker. This drone footage was taken by Inspire Studios, who is working on a documentary film for us. Last week, at the unveiling of the apple picker, we came together for a socially distanced photo opportunity with our youth. Um, you'll see those four kids sitting up there together rather closely. They are cousins. They're in a family pod. So they're being together is not unusual. But the photo on the right documents a moment of pure joy for me because the youth were standing at the bottom of the mural, looking up, and they were just in awe of what they had accomplished. And we are so very, very proud of them and happy to have worked with them. You may recall that Armanita is the next approved image. And we've already begun laying out the paper pattern so that we can begin tile fabrication. We're going to be open by appointment only at the Museo starting in November, which is unfortunate as we not only have to limit the number of people who can come inside the space, but, um, offering them by appointment is limiting factor for people who don't have access to technology or simply find the process of signing up online, um, daunting. So to help with that, in an effort to increase our community connections, we've just finished making this mobile mosaic studio, which will be taken to farmer's market starting next week. We're still looking for local artists to submit images for the horizontal sections of the garage. Uh, we'll be able to take them through the end of December. And interested people should contact us at watsonvillebrillante.com. The image to the right is a sketch of a potential image for the final vertical section. And, um, I'd lastly like to finish that meeting with you here tonight is our community celebration, since we won't be having a dedication party. We wanted to thank all of our volunteers and especially essential workers in our community who are keeping us fed and safe. To end my presentation, I want to end with a quote by one of our most valued staff members, Brianna Flores. She's a young woman who went away to college and came back to Watsonville with a desire to work in the nonprofit realm to help give back to our community. She said, "I wanted to get involved with community arts and empowerment when I saw the images of the artwork. These are the people who live here. It is my family. It is my community.
But I think it's a, it's a good measure and I think it should be supported by, you know, by Mr. Hurst and along with the rest of the the council members here. But yeah, I'll just leave it there. And I just wanted to voice my opinion on that.
Thank you so much Jose for sharing with us. Thank you. Anybody else wants to address the council on agenda items on the consent agenda?
Go ahead Kathleen.
We have two people at this Zoom place, so.
Each one of you will have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to thank Mayor Garcia for putting this on the agenda and we have had some conversations with Mr. Hidalgo and you know, we, we kind of feel like practically speaking, if people really did start going to the egg commissioners office or calling them on the phone when they have questions about pesticide applications in their neighborhood, it would be a lot more labor intensive than posting the notices of intent. I meant, we've spoken to some of you, I'm going to just kind of recapitulate my big four reasons why I think this is important. The first one is farm worker health. Farm workers are the most likely to be exposed and they often do not get adequate information about what is being used in nearby fields or even where they work. The second one is our community, especially our vulnerable populations, pregnant women, young women, young children, people with chronic illnesses, the senior citizens, we all deserve to know what pesticides are being applied if they're hazardous in our neighborhoods because drift does happen. We have a, an interest on the part of consumers. There's been a big shift in their preferences toward organic agriculture. People want to know what chemicals are used to grow their food. And as I've spoken with some of you before, I think Watsonville has a big potential to beef up our image in our brand as the Paharo Valley being a place where food is sustainably and fairly grown. And then there of course is our environment. We have the flora and the fauna that can be harmed, the water and air quality. And of course, there's the health of our soil. Our soil is being damaged by current agricultural practices and we have diminished fertility. There is also the impact of current agricultural practice on climate change, an issue that I know the council finds of great importance. So considering that I know you're in terms of human health and environmental health and justice, I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. And who's going to speak now? Who's your partner? Who's going to speak?
Woody, Woody Rianic, Watsonville SAS. Thank you.
Okay.
We've already talked with Mayor Garcia. You might wonder, why did we bring this to a city council that has no official jurisdiction over the county egg commission? Well, this is our community. We have an activist mayor who's been an activist for over 40 years. We have other excellent people on the council and, and fine city manager. We've had success with roundup issues. I've been very impressed with the climate action plan and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But our concern is this is a symbolic, non-binding resolution by our community affirming our right to know what potentially highly toxic restricted pesticides are applied around near our communities. And we, we feel that it adds an additional level of protection for people during COVID times. And we're concerned that schoolchildren who are schooling at home, their homes can be anywhere in the community. Now, state law requires a quarter mile buffer. We don't have that around the entire community. The next best thing would be informing people in advance of application of applying the restricted materials, which by filing the notice of intent, making that public information on the county ag website. Now, in all fairness to Mr. Hidalgo, we've worked with him in the senior community. We've had a pilot program of notification, but its success was spotty because we have many renters who were never reached. And when we asked him if this could be extended to the public, to everyone, not just vulnerable and medically fragile seniors in our thousand member, three homeowners associations. He said he demurred. So again, this is, this is really about public health. It's protecting the public health is one of the mandates of his position. It's really about an additional layer of protection for schoolchildren, for seniors, for vulnerable people in general. Usually the health costs are not factored in when you do a cost benefit analysis. We know that these long-term chronic exposures to pesticides, particularly drift prone fumigants that are gases have health impacts. And it's, those are of import to all of us. So we urge you to pass this symbolic resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you Woody for your comments. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address an agenda item on the consent agenda?
Melissa, go ahead.
Hi, I teach third grade at PVUSD and I've been a concerned citizen regarding the heavy use of restricted pesticides for years because of the effects that I see in my students. For example, asthma, cancer and learning problems. So tonight I'm here as a member of Safe Ag, Safe Schools or SAS to urge the council to pass this important resolution that will make a positive step towards greater transparency regarding notices of intent to apply pesticides in our community. We have a right to know what is drifting and what we're breathing in our air. Thank you.
Thank you Melissa. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on any item on the consent agenda?
Please go ahead.
Did you say Krishna? Okay, hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Krishna Feldman. I am a children's librarian. I am, I live in Watsonville and I have long been concerned with the spraying of pesticides around where I live and around all the schools that, you know, that our children are at. And I think it would be very beneficial to have this you know, put forward to the public so that we can be, you know, we can shut our windows and we can do other things to you know, to take precautions because our children are vulnerable and, and you know, are elderly and, and everyone. And so I really recommend that you, that you do this for us. I feel like it's transparency is so important and, and would be so beneficial for all. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you Krishna for your words. I was just, I was just informed that there's still 11 raised hands. And so what I'm going to do instead of three minutes, I'm going to narrow it down to two minutes. So we will continue. And who's next?
Kathleen.
Hi, is it Karen Wallace is up? Here we go. Okay, yes, thank you very much. I am a teacher at PVUSD and I also have two school age children at PVUSD. And I now have asthma. I didn't have asthma until I started working in schools in Paharo Valley Unified School District. I worry about my students. I worry about my fellow colleagues, the custodians, the admin, everybody, but especially the children. If I'm a grown woman and I can develop asthma that I never had before until being in the strawberry fields, schools within the strawberry fields, that says something. And it says something about protecting our community. We need total transparency. If we know we can do better, we can close windows, we can take action. If this is public knowledge we can get from the Freedom of Information Act, well, then why can't it just simply be put up on a page, a webpage? You know, it's, it's rather simple right now to make webpages and throw up PDFs of these, scan them and put them up. We need to know, we have a right to know. And I would urge the city council to please make this transparent for all of us. If it's legal, okay, let us know. Let us know so we can take action. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you Karen. Moving on to the next person.
Bernie, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening again, Mayor, Council. My name is Bernie Gomez. I am the programs and leadership assistant at MIPA, motivating individual leadership for public advancement. And I also come here to, to, you know, comment on the resolution for for the notice of intent in regards to spraying pesticides, right? I think that's just a no brainer. Watsonville is a rich, beautiful agricultural city, right? We, we have delicious crops being grown. And this is a way to uplift public safety, right? Because this is what public safety is, ensuring and uplifting the public health of the community. And you know, yeah, it's just, it's, it's a no, to me, it's just a no brainer, you know, we, we got to protect our kids, you know, that we got farming going on next to our schools. So we should be, you know, doing this and even more to ensure that the continuous, the continuous safety and of our farm workers, of our families, of our children. And it's just like the, the teacher that just spoke, you know, developing asthma, you know, these are preventative measures too, you know. So we allow our kids to, to grow up healthy. And you know, I stand behind this in full support and I, and I urge the city council also to do so, you know, as, as this is, this is our community, this is your community. You know, I'll say that much now. Thank you.
Thank you Bernie for your comments. Next person, please.
It's a phone number ending in six seven seven.
Hi, everyone. This is Raina. I am a community member from Watsonville. And I first and foremost want to appreciate and thank everybody who has taken the time to comment on this resolution. We are representing not only ourselves, but also the hundreds of community members that are being affected by pesticide and pesticide pollution in, in their area and in their household. So yeah, so we know that, as mentioned previously, this information is publicly available. And we know that nothing is preventing CIC from being able to do this, from posting the notices of intent. And thankfully, we do have organizations such as SAS that are doing this work and making an effort to, to make sure that these, these notices of intent are, are able to be accessed by community members. So we do ask the ag commissioner to post a notice of intent to use restricted materials pesticides on the ag commissioner's website and because we know that his offices receives them. So this will allow us to be one step closer to ensure that our community members, such as many, many essential workers are protected and informed in order to make the best, the best decisions and in order to make, to prevent and limit exposure to these pesticides. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you Lynda for your comments. Next person.
Caesar, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the city council. Cecil Lara with the Mother Bay Central Labor Council. And in strong support of, of the resolution on the pesticide reporting. I, I want to say that, you know, this is very similar to what the council is doing tonight. You're being transparent. You have your agenda on your website and you're giving the community the information they need because of decisions you make as a council are affecting residents. That's what we're asking the ag commissioner to do for our community in the Paharo Valley, in particular, the city of Watsonville. So not to belabor the issue, I really want to thank the leadership of Mayor Garcia on bringing this forward. And I strongly support this, and this is an issue for working families. Thank you very much.
Thank you Cecil. Next person.
Yes, Nina.
Hey, everyone. I want to start with this one as much as, my name is Yasenia Molina. I work for the Digital Nest. And I'm here also about the resolution for notice of intent in terms of spraying pesticides in our community. We're surrounded by agriculture, you know, so it's really difficult to not be affected by this if you live in Watsonville or in surrounding areas. I very, very much love Watsonville. I love my community and hold it very dear to my heart. So I agree that I think we all deserve to know what's being sprayed, when it's being sprayed. So we can take you know, take action when we need to, like, like someone mentioned, if we knew, we would be able to close our windows, you know, make sure our children are indoors that day or are away, you know, maybe we, we leave out of Watsonville for, for the day. I think it's fairly simple, you know, from my work with the Digital Nest, I've seen how simple it really is to edit webpages and to add add documents, add PDF. So from what I understand, it's really very simple to do so. You know, our young high school students are learning how to do this. So I, I really urge you guys to pass this resolution and I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you Yasenia for your comments. Next person.
Ellie, go ahead.
Hi, so I'd like to thank Kathleen and Woody and the community that's been speaking so far. I completely agree. As a parent, I too am concerned with the spread of pesticides when my child is in school. So as Bernie said, this should really be a no brainer. And I'm confused if someone could answer me. Was Juan Hidalgo against this? I wasn't 100% sure if I was listening correctly. And I think that not only should it be on the website, I think that you guys should be even more progressive and put it on, on your social medias, put it absolutely everywhere. Put it on the community groups so that everybody is absolutely aware of, of when it's happening. I also had a question. Is this the time when we can speak on PV arts purchase of the Porter Building? Or is that?
Speak. That's going to come up next.
Okay, I wanted to just make sure on that. Thank you for answering that. So yes, please, I urge you to also pass this resolution. It is very important that we know when this is happening. We have to protect our community and especially our farm workers and our their children. I mean, come on, we need to do more, not less. A website is so easy to work. I'm sure someone can do it before this meeting's over. Like, it's so ridiculously easy. So please do support this and support community. Thank you.
Thank you Ellie for your comments. Is there anybody else?
There are ten more.
Hello.
George, go ahead.
Hi, I'm George Feldman. I'm a longtime teacher in the Watsonville area. I've had also been a longtime sore throat person, as has my wife and our son managed to develop asthma while here. When there are days where I get a strong smell of onions wafting into the school, I teach with the doors closed. And I'd really like to know, even when it's a subtle smell, what it is, if I need to be concerned how much. We had fires last year and did rainy day recess type activities inside to avoid exposing our asthmatic students to them. It would be nice to be able to do that with pesticides. I'm also going to reiterate what many people said that if I can take a database, and I presume this information is put on a database, and I can make it read only to certain participants and let others manipulate it. I don't see why Mr. Hidalgo couldn't hire a student from the business to put that together for them. Thank you. Thank you Mayor Garcia for bringing this forward. I'd also like to thank the school district for their text notifications on farming safely near schools. Although I'm also going to point out that I've received 10 of those since July. And I presume we have applied more near our schools. That's it. Thank you so much this, for your time this evening.
Thank you George for your comments. Anyone else?
Anthony, go ahead.
Yes, hi.
Yes, hi. Hello, my name is Hector Calderon. Good evening, when I start this, council members. I'm a part of Safe Ag, Safe Schools. And yeah, our ask for item M, I know that Ellie had clearly stated that, you know, Juan Hidalgo was against, he is against the posting of notices of intent, which is why he came on first in terms of saying that we shouldn't vote on the item M, which is our resolution that we had handed to the board of here for the council members to vote. And so our ask to the public is that, you know, that the public has the access to these pesticide notices of intent at the ag commissioner website. And that so that they can be, you know, informed as well as take precautions that they can be taken, such as like some of the other members have already said, you know, being able to shut windows and keeping, you know, children as well as elders with asthma or, you know, sensitive lungs indoors. And so we know that NOIs are a low cost and a low resource step, as you've kind of already heard from Yessenya, who's from Digital Nest. And we're just really asking that the ag commissioner just post the notices of intent on his website, already existing website. We're not asking for any particular notification through email or text, just a really simple thing that he could just do to add on his website. Growers are already required to submit these NOIs for restricted material pesticides. And there would be nothing else needed from their end besides having to, you know, submit them to the ag commissioner. And so that would be a really easy thing in behalf of the ag commissioner to do to bring transparency and accountability. And so we really hope that we can get the vote for the resolution to be passed with all you guys as council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. Anyone else?
George, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I already had a turn.
And anybody else?
Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, for bringing this matter up. I'm a teacher at Renaissance High School, and I'm surrounded by fields. And I think this is just a basic matter of rights for the community. It's really concerning. We would need to be able to take proactive measures. My school's continuation recovery, a lot of students who are there miss school at their comprehensive. So we're trying to recover that. So we need students there every day. And I have seen cases where a kid doesn't come to school, misses the bus or something, has staff go pick him up, and the staff notices noticeable emissions on the way there. And then the student leaves later with a headache. That kind of thing is something we need to be able to avoid as best we can. And I feel like this is a simple way to do that. Really, in this day and age, it should be email and text. We're just having it publicly on the, on the website is a very modest ask. And I know for me, I commute in, and so my exposure is down. I'm not at school. I'm not transiting the area as much. But my students don't have that privilege. Some of them live in areas that are at high risk. And if you look at the maps around the Watsonville, you can see it's a ring of danger. I ask this, this body, which I know to be responsible and an example of good government to, to show some leadership and encourage the same from the county commissioner's office. Frankly, it's a little disturbing to hear that this would be, you know, hard for him because to me, you know, there's that saying, sunlight's the best disinfectant. And if, it must be within government's capacity to be efficient and budgeted well enough to make transparency a priority. That's just basic of government, I feel. So I ask this body to, to stand by the people and not just the growers and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Chris. I'm going to have to apologize to the public, but I was just informed there's still another 11 more people that want to speak. So I'm going to reduce the time again now to one minute. So each one of you will get to speak, but you'll only have one minute. Who's next?
Michael and Kim.
Hi, my name is Michael Kim, and I'm a resident of this county. And I feel that it is highly important that the notice of intent gets more or less published so the public knows what is being sprayed in the agricultural field so that everyone could be kind of more or less take their lives into their own hands and be safe. So they could take measures as they need to keep themselves safe. Now, not everyone could do that just because of their living conditions. But as much as we could help people, I think that is the direction that we should go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Next person.
Laurie, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you very much for making time. I live in Santa Cruz. And I'm really aware of the relationships between Santa Cruz and South County and the really crucial importance that our essential workers in South County and Watsonville are doing to provide food for the county, but also much more broadly. And I very strongly advocate for passing this resolution. It seems like a really, really obvious and common sense thing to put this, these notices on the website to protect essential workers, families, children, teachers who are living near these places where these actually very potentially toxic, especially for people with sensitivities, chemicals are being used. So thank you very much for your time and for all the work that you're doing on City Council.
Thank you, Laurie. Next person.
Good luck. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Itlali. I work at the Digital Nest. And I would really encourage the City Council members to motion this pass or pass this motion. You know, in this day and age, there really is no excuse as to why the community does not have access to this information. This is a matter of public safety. I, you know, at the very least, have a, something on a website that people can look up. Is that enough? Absolutely not. We need to be doing more to ensure that the community knows about, you know, when pesticides is being sprayed. But I, you know, working at the Nest, I've seen how talented our youth are. And there are the resources out there to, to offer or to put things up there like that. So thank you.
Thank you, Jatotli. Next person.
Steve, go ahead.
Yes, I completely support every single speaker. They are absolutely correct. I had the good fortune to meet Kathleen and Woody when I was running for mayor two years ago. And they brought me into witness about this issue. Safe Ag, Safe Schools is probably one of the finest organizations in this state in order to protect people. I've lost five neighbors to cancer on Bronte Avenue. We back up to El Bar Field. El Bar Field was used this earlier this summer to spray chloral picrin, which was used by Germany as a tear gas, folks. So we've also lost pets due to mysterious circumstances soon after spraying of the 78-acre El Bar Field, which is still barren. There's no, there are no raspberries growing there. The point is, we need to pass this, this, this measure M or this resolution M, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next.
Lilia. Hello, Mayor Garcia. My name is Lilia. I understand the effects of like a chemical exposure because I have worked in a chemistry lab for over 10 years and I have a chemistry degree. So I strongly encourage that the resolution be passed because it's gonna improve the quality of life of the Watsonville residents. And this is just a step not only to help the Watsonville residents, but especially the farmworkers who already deal with other challenges such as low wages, working long hours, working with tools that could possibly injure them, being hunched over for hours. So I strongly encourage that the resolution be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilia. Next.
Eliana. Here one second, Mayor, please.
Okay.
Takashi, go ahead.
Oh, I'm Takashi again. I'm in support of passing this resolution. I live in the Bay Village. There's a big raspberry field just beside the Bay Village. And the residents in the Bay Village received a letter from the grower probably last year. He notified us that he would, he was going to use a pesticide. But before he used it, actually, and it was really good. And I think communication is very important as well as transparency. So that's why I support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Takashi. Next.
Margaret, go ahead. Margaret Rosa.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, my name's Margaret Rosa, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Amesti School in Paco. I've worked there for, I've worked in the district for over 24 years at both Amesti and Alianza. I want to preface by saying that seven of my colleagues from Alianza have had cancer, six of whom have all passed away from cancer since I've worked there. I run the organic farm at my school too, and we are surrounded by organic farms. But I became an inadvertent activist with the SAS organization when a few years ago, they were going to be fumigating and they gave us very little notice. And I realized that this is an issue of of environmental racism. A lot of our families do not, are not aware of the application of pesticides near their homes. And a lot of them face multiple exposures since they are farmworkers. And the Chamaco Studies, Chamaco Study has illustrated the effects of multiple exposures. I live in Aptos, but I've worked in Watsonville. And I don't believe this would be happening in Aptos if, if people knew about it. So, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next.
Eliana, is now your turn to speak.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Eliana. I am a PVSD student, and I am here to urge you all to really think about this resolution. All of the PVSD schools that I have attended are by fields. And it really does concern me to think about all the long-term effects that these pesticides can have on us youth. And just kind of echoing what Ellie and Bernie had to say, you know, as a youth, I'd also like to say that this is a no-brainer. I think that not just this, but anything that has an effect on any group of our community's health should be announced to the public. So with that said, I am here to urge you all to just be a lot more transparent with these notices of intent when using restricted pesticides. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliana. Next. Mariela, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mariela Jacuinda. I am a CSU MBA student. After I lost my job by the pandemic, I was working in the fields in the summer. While I was working, I was available to see that people in the fields have not the knowledge about pesticides. In my opinion, people need to have the right to get this knowledge and be informed about this important topic. And the, and the effects that pesticides bring to their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariela. Anybody else?
I believe that is, let me check. I believe that's the last speaker.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council at this time, unless somebody wants to pull something off of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, Adilio?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda item, but with an amendment to item M. That on.
You want to pull M off the agenda?
No, no, I'm saying I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda item. But with an amendment to item M.
Okay.
That the name Juan Hidalgo be striked on the last section on item two. And that they only read the Santa Cruz County Agricultural Commissioner. I feel that it's just better to keep it open to the commissioner as a general instead of a personification of it. So I do wholeheartedly support measure M, I mean, the consent agenda item M. But I'd just like to have Juan Hidalgo's name removed and just left with the Santa Cruz County Agricultural Commissioner title.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Here you go, second. It fails.
No, no, I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been, a motion's been put on the floor and it's been seconded. And since you made the motion, Adilio, go ahead and speak on it.
Just on, just on item M, just really quick. I do, I do wholeheartedly support this. Unfortunately, it's, 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 just like Woody said, it's just symbolic in a way because we do not have jurisdiction over the Santa Cruz County Agricultural Commission. But it is sending hopefully a, a message to the, to the ag commissioner that he needs to be more transparent in his information to the community. So the community has a little bit more access to this. But again, just want to make sure that the community understands that we don't have jurisdiction over his, his department, his agency. And then we are just, this is an encouragement that he does become more transparent with the information for the community of the city of Watsonville. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're still speaking on the motion. We'll start with Paco. Do you have any thoughts on this motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I want to thank everyone who called in to voice their opinion. You know, and, you know, I want to be clear that I know that Juan Hidalgo has done a lot already for the community. And I know he's gone above and beyond on many issues. But, you know, I sort of see it as a first step or something greater or something bigger. My understanding is that no one else in the state does something like this. And the fact that maybe we're encouraging and we want to work together to build this is, I think, a remarkable thing. And, you know, I want to let the ag commissioner know that the community will support him if he needs help. I think a lot of people express that, and I really appreciate that from the community. And so I hope he just doesn't feel like he's alone or that the burden is on him. I think the burden is on all of us to work together to better inform our community. And even if it's just one family that we have to let know that pesticides are being used, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that that one family, that one house is safe and healthy. So I will be supporting the resolution.
Yeah, but this isn't a supportive resolution. This is an amendment to the resolution. So you'll have to decide if you're going to support that amendment to that result.
Oh, I apologize, Mayor. I would be comfortable with supporting the amendment made by my colleague, Councilman Gonzalez.
Okay, okay. Ari, would you like to address this motion?
Yeah, I was happy to second it. I was just reviewing the language, and that's what took me the moment. I agree with Councilman Gonzalez. This is not to say that Juan Hidalgo is going to be leaving his commissioner status now. But this is a symbolic, as far as I'm concerned, communication from us to the ag commissioner of the county. And whoever that ag commissioner will be, and as they develop this plan of transparency, I think it's about communication, you know. So I, I support the amendment because it is not one person, it is the office. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Felipe. You have any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, you know, I, I did have some, some questions too that I had. I wanted to find out, like the notice of intent, how many, how typical application, how many pages is it?
That's a good question. I don't know that answer. Anybody? Okay, you'll have to ask the ag commissioner and.
Well, I thought, you know, somebody. Well, I thought, you know, somebody would know here, probably, I would imagine. You know, because I was trying to figure out, like, how hard really is it to do, to put it up? To put, you know, either a PDF or JPG of it, you know? And then my other question was, you know, I, that I wanted to ask was, the application, if it's more than, than like three or four pages, all the relevant information on what pages is it? Is it on the first two pages or is it all on the first page? Or is it, you know, all the relevant information is it contained in all the, you know, if it's 10 pages? But, you know, the, the information that's needed for the general public, like where is it all contained in, in, in terms of like the document? My other question is, when are the farmers supposed to submit, submit the NOIs prior to the fumigants being applied? Because, you know, I mean, I could see, you know, if there's, if there's, if, if the commissioner has to submit these or put them up within 24 hours, you know, and the farmers have to submit them 24 hours before, it might be difficult. But, but if it's like 72 hours prior to applying the fumigants, that gives the commissioner, you know, sometime, you know, at least 72 hours to upload them on the website. And it gives IT some time to actually upload those on the website. So, you know, just process questions that I have. But, you know, generally, I, like I said, you know, it's, it's, like Ari was saying, these are more like if it was happening tomorrow questions. But it, like Ari said, it is symbolic and, and my questions are more like if it was happening tomorrow, questions.
Okay, Felipe, those questions can still be asked by staff, to staff, if you still want those answers.
Sure, an email.
Will we not, Lowell?
Yes, Mayor, I'm supportive of the amendment and supportive of the consent agenda. I'm not sure why Juan Hidalgo's name was attached to it in the first place, but let's move forward.
Okay, Trina?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On this particular topic, I'm not supportive because of the process, not because of the end result. I feel that the ag commissioner had been blindsided in the council. When we don't have the jurisdiction, we don't have the ability, we don't have the questions answered. As Felipe had mentioned, where was the Farm Bureau? Where were the farmers? All of this is conversation that needs to be transparent on all sides. And this as a resolution, which we have no jurisdiction over, did not provide the transparency and the full robust discussion that should take place whenever we're going to impose something on an agency that we have no jurisdiction over. So if we were going to have something that we were going to work on as a community for the safety of our community and to be inclusive with those that it impacts and those that are, those that are doing the service and those that are being impacted and the community's being impacted, you've got to have a conversation that's all the way around the table. And we only have half the people at the table here. And granted, we can get there with something that we can do or work with the commission on and work with the farmers on, but only bring in half to the table without the full robust discussion and blindsiding the ag commissioner. I don't, that's not the process that I wish to support. Not the outcome, but the process that I don't support. And I do have another item on the agenda that I want to make some comments about as well. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll go back to other agenda items. Okay, I have a.
Mayor, just for clarification, my motion was to approve the whole consent agenda item and to make.
Trina will be able to, after I get to speak, Trina will be able to address the other agenda items she wishes to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so my question's to you, Aurelio. In terms of the request that's being done of the notices, the, the resolution is asking the ag commissioner, and his name is Juan Hidalgo, to do this. And so if you want his name eliminated, who then are we going to be asking to do this?
You would be asking the Santa Cruz County Agriculture Commissioner Agency. That's who you'd be asking, whoever it is. All I'm trying to get at is if for some reason Juan Hidalgo says, I resign, I don't want to do this, then we don't have him as Juan Hidalgo the commissioner no more. And so another resolution would have to be brought forth to us to address the same issue. If we remove his name, we're addressing just the agency itself. It doesn't matter who is in that position, but it's the agency itself that has to bring this information forth to the community. When, when they can do it, I mean, because there was a lot of good questions brought up. But this is like a, you know, like I said, I, I support this, but this is the beginning of trying to become more transparent for our community. And this is what we need to understand. And it's not about one person, it's about that agency overall.
Okay, so then I have a question to Matt. And it might have to take another amendment. If, if this, if Juan Hidalgo's name is removed, I don't remember on the resolution that it says that the, who's ever in charge of the commission or who's ever in charge of the agency will do this. And so what would it take that, because if we remove his, his name, then it doesn't go to anybody. Nobody has authority, should they be able to do it? Nobody has authority to do it. So how is that resolved?
Well, Council, Mayor Garcia, I think what Councilmember Gonzalez is requesting is that it simply be directed to the ag commissioner, the office itself, regardless of who may hold that office at any given time. Right now it's Juan Hidalgo, a year from now it may be someone else. And I think the spirit behind the resolution is to make these requests of the office itself, regardless of who the individual may be. And I, I think that's what Councilmember Gonzalez is hoping to achieve with his amendment.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes more, more sense. Okay, so we're still on the, on the motion to accept the, adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion on this consent agenda and this motion? And I think Trina said she wanted to bring something up.
Yes, I would like to discuss, discuss item I, which is the measure D funds. I know that they came back and said that we have a few other items to be imposed on here. And based on conversations I've had with residents in the Atkinson, Blanca Lane, Gardner, Catterley, and Packard, I want to make sure that we have something put on a list for some of the projects to include evaluating the red zones, evaluating the ADA access, visibility and signage for safe routes to school and signage for when it comes to the trash and the garbage pickup, whether that's under D or not for signage purposes. It could be a more of a public works kind of thing outside of the measure D funding itself. But many items of safety and concern has been brought up in this subdivision as well as it relates to safe routes to school, which is a measure D item. And also these other safety items here in terms of the visibility and getting things painted so that people can see stop signs that are faded that you can't see any longer. So I want to be sure that there is an evaluation and that part of the measure D funding looks at that.
Would you like a staff person to respond to that?
Mayor Garcia, I can speak to that really briefly. So the amendment that's before you this evening with the measure D approved transportation projects was approved by the council earlier this year. The amendment that's being made is to adjust the budget because RTC, along with many others, are having to adjust based on the impact that COVID is having on revenue streams. But the project list itself is not changing. That will come back to the council as it always does on an annual basis. Or we will again provide the council another opportunity to review the types of items that you're raising, Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez, in the future. So this is adjusting the budget or keeping all the projects moving that have already been approved. And then the measure D list of projects will come back before the council as it does on an annual basis.
Yeah, as long as we know that these requests will come back when we do evaluate because that, that subdivision has asked multiple times for that. And I understand that it's the budget item for this purpose, but because we're talking about streets and safety, I want to make sure that it's well noted by staff, division is addressed. Thank you.
Understood.
Are there any other council member wanting to address this motion? Hearing none. Beatrice, can you repeat the motion and then take roll call?
The motion is to approve the consent agenda with amendment to mesh, to item M to remove the name of Mr. Hidalgo.
Okay, and could you take roll down, please?
Man Gomez? Yes and no on N as in Nancy and M as in Mary. Estrada?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Everything.
Parker? I'm sorry, first?
Yes, on everything.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
No on the amendment and yes on the rest. Okay, motion passes. Moving on, we're now to new business. We have a presentation by two respondents to request for proposals for sale or lease of real property. Porter Building, Pahravalle Arts and Watsonville LCC are the respondents. And I want to introduce Assistant City Manager Tamara Vives, who's going to introduce the applicants. Tamara?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, hold on, too many, too many things to press on. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Tamara Vives, Assistant City Manager. And I, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you two respondents to RFPs that were issued in regards to the potential lease or sale of the Porter Building. I just want to start with a recommendation in front of you this evening, which is simply to receive and accept the presentation of the two respondents for the request of proposals issued by the city of Watsonville to sell or lease city-owned property, in this case, the Porter Building that is located on Main Street. A little bit about the property, the city has owned, owns this property located on 280 Main Street and has owned the Porter Building since 1966. It is a historic building that is located in downtown Watsonville in the downtown commercial core of our downtown area, and it's approximately 15,000 square feet. Just as a reminder, the RFP was issued with the intention to sell or lease the Porter Building. And this RFP was issued on November 12, 2019, requesting qualified parties interested in purchase or leasing. The RFP seeking proposal, seeking proposals from, was seeking proposals from qualified firms supported by a professional architectural engineering team with the objective in, of entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement for the purchase or lease of the Porter Building. And the RFP outlines several development objectives that included a mixed-use commercial project that is utilized as the, the first story or the lower first floor of the building as retail or a restaurant opportunity. And the upstairs could be used for residential use or other office, office use. After the RFP was issued, two successful proposals were received by the deadline of January 3, 2020. We review the, both proposals and confirm that they, they were complete and they met the development objectives established in the RFP. The council received preliminary report of the proposals received at their March, during their March 10th, 2020 close session meeting and directed staff to request a presentation from the applicants. Soon after, just three days after that presentation was received by the council, the city and the county declared an emergency due to the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic. And some of these efforts were put, put on pause. Recently, both applicants expressed their desire to continue negotiating with the council regarding the purchase and their interest to develop the Porter Building. Therefore, this evening, fast forward several months, the both applicants have been invited to present their development proposals to the council and the public. And that's the objective of this evening presentation. I have to share with the council these two proposals that were received. One is, was received by Pahravalle Arts Council, which is a nonprofit in town that was established in 1984 with the purpose of sponsoring and encouraging artistic, cultural, historical, and scientific educational activities. This evening, we have with us Judy Estabiel, who is the treasurer of PV Arts. And she will be presenting the elements of the proposed use for the Porter Building by, by PV Arts. The second proposal is by Watts News LLC, which is a limited liability company established in 2019 by the sole officer and manager, Dampel Crono. He's here with us this evening. And one of the publications that Watts News manages.
I had three of them right now. I did, but I do like.
Okay, and he will be presenting that proposal for, for Watts News. And this, this, this proposal is also, for use the building is also complying with the development objectives of the RFP. And it offers a new and innovative approach for, for the use of the building in our downtown. So I, I just want to touch over next steps. After you, council, received the presentations from both applicants, you will conclude the public meeting and no council action is required at this time. The council will need to consider price and terms during their close session meeting on November 10th, after receiving these presentations this evening. And on November 10th, the council will direct staff to engage in a, with a preferred applicant to attend, attempt to negotiate a contract for the purchase of the building. So with that, it is my pleasure again to begin with inviting, I think, let me see, who's? I think Dan has his camera up. Dan, would you like to start with your presentation first? I think you, you need to unmute.
I think, I think we're good. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay, and you're welcome to share your screen if you, if you so like.
Very good. Thank you so much, tomorrow. I very much appreciate the process that you've been through and keeping it going in the face of the pandemic. Thank you, Mayor Garcia and members of council for inviting us to speak to you tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the Paharonian, which is one of two businesses in Watsonville that have operated for 152 years. The Paharonian is, I think, tied for being the oldest business continuously operated in Watsonville for the past century and a half, being established in 1868. It is a tremendous honor to be asked to make a presentation on behalf of this historical treasure, even though it's newer than our business. It was built a few years after. It is, I think, one of the most important structures, not only in Watsonville, but in Santa Cruz County. And that's why it can be such a centerpiece of the future of Watsonville. After reading the amazing letters of testimonial for the PV Arts, we've always been strong supporters of the arts. We think that the arts are extremely important to the future of Watsonville as well. The only concern I have about their proposal is that they are shooting too low. I don't think a 15,000 square foot building can accommodate the ambitions they have. And I would strongly encourage the council to look big and maybe think about a Pahravalle Performing Arts Center with a gallery annex and large parking facilities on a nice piece of land. Because Pahravalle Arts has a huge future and we encourage you to support them in any way possible, whether or not it's through the Porter Building. We are, we've. We are, we've, basically what it's going to come down to, I think you've got two very good proposals before you tonight. You can't go wrong with either one, but it's a question of what does the city want to do with this highly strategic resource that you have in downtown Watsonville? Do you want to use it to support, you know, arts programs? Or do you want to use it as a catalyst for the future of downtown Watsonville? Which, being located strategically between Santa Cruz and Silicon Valley on one side, and then the, the Monterey Peninsula on the other, Watsonville has nowhere to go but up. And if we do the downtown right and put the right amenities in place, it is going to become an economic powerhouse that will fund a lot of activities for the entire community. And we see this as a strategic catalyst. So this is kind of a crossroads for Watsonville in terms of what we can do. So we've looked at what the, we believe that the highest and best use of this property is as a tax generating economic generator. And, and as a catalyst for future development in downtown Watsonville. You've got all these beautiful historic shoulder-to-shoulder buildings in downtown Watsonville. Let's make downtown Watsonville a great place. Now, what does downtown Watsonville not have right now? It doesn't have a destination restaurant. It doesn't have a boutique hotel that can accommodate the, the, the type of visitors who we believe will be drawn here. So these are two of the items that we've incorporated in our proposal. The additional thing is, is a creative media center. To, and one of the things we want to do with this, which Tony Nunes will be heading up, our editor, who I think most of you know, he is working with Cabrillo College's Journalism Department to rebuild their department through internship programs. And that would be based out of this facility as well. So we're talking about the future of media as part of this proposal. The idea of putting a first-class destination restaurant, but when I say first class, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the quality of the food, not necessarily the price points, because part of the, part of the idea behind this is to make it accessible to all. And that's why I've brought in Joe Chironi, who is one of the most innovative restaurateurs and restaurant consultants in the country today, who's, who's, just comes up with amazing concepts. And his idea is to come up with the next concept by following the trends, because the restaurant world is fast-changing under COVID. So we've been evolving our thinking in the process of this all. The, the, the other aspect to this is a very design-forward restaurant renovation. We've been buying and restoring historical properties in the other communities where we do business. We're currently in the brand-new Gilroy office. We just purchased this building and renovated it. It's, it's not quite finished yet, but we, we, we're right in the middle of downtown Gilroy in the historic district and trying to be a catalyst in that community as well. The, we estimate that this proposal will bring 50 to 100 jobs to, to Watsonville as part of it. Now, if I may for a moment, just share my screen. Is that working okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the idea is to, let me put it in full screen mode. The idea is to come up with an extremely forward-thinking and ambitious proposal that we believe is consistent with the revitalization efforts of the city. The concept involves a casual dining restaurant emphasizing the agricultural bounty of the Pahravalli. Locally sourced ingredients, a destination wine bar emphasizing Santa Cruz Mountain wineries, a food market that would be part of it, a boutique micro hotel, which I'll get to in a second, and a creative space for what we believe is the media company of the future in Pahravalli. Our objective is a marquee project that will draw people from near and far and be a catalyst. We believe that there will be follow-on investments once we do this. And part of the, what we bring to the table is the media power. We have 13 newspapers. Right now, we are in Monterey County, we're in Gilroy and Morgan Hill, we're in Silicon Valley, Santa Cruz. And some of you may know, we just purchased the Scotts Valley Paper, the Press Banner. So we have a tremendous ability to market Watsonville to the world, or at least to the regional neighbors. And that is very important, is, is the media power that we bring to the table. The core of the proposal is the restaurant market and wine bar. These are some concept sketches. And, and the core is, is a pasta restaurant with many, many amenities as part of it. Joe, did you want to add anything to that?
Basically, my, my point, or at least what I would like to come across is it's not as a money-making operation as we move forward into the proposed property. What I'd like to convey to you is my involvement in consulting and chefing across the country is, I was brought up as a free intern. I worked without cost to learn and without pay. And I have paid that forward to the people that I've brought into my operations throughout the country, that being the Choctaw Indians in Mississippi and Haitians in South Florida and everyone that I've come across as being warm, loving, and energetic people to try to get their ideas and assistance into the operations that I put forward. Food is life, food is art, all of the things that we're trying to do and what we're trying to convey with what we're proposing in Watsonville, I think will benefit the community through an open heart. And I would love to give not only a great cultured cuisine to Watsonville and the, and the people there, but also to open the doors to anyone. And that is what we're discussing now, given COVID and the impact on the economy for a lot of the, you know, low-income individuals, is how do we reflect and be generous with what we're trying to offer? And that's what I would like to convey.
And Joe's, and Joe's being pretty modest. The last time Anthony Bourdain came to California, who did it, who did he ask to put together the meal and host the party? Joe. So Joe is an international player in the culinary world. The concept, Tudo Aposto, is very contemporary, and it's being used in many big cities as nutritious, low-cost cuisine with many add-ons that make it economically viable. And that, we believe, will be very successful in a post-COVID environment. One of the concepts is a green roof, which is ecologically friendly, as well as growing the produce that's produce and herbs that's needed for the restaurant.
As well as reaching out to the local growers and partnering with them.
I think those are beehives on top.
You have beehives as well, yeah. Everyone needs bees.
This is one of the sample menus. Of course, it's going to, going to change. But this, this is an example of the type of cuisine we're offering. Really good price points and delicious food.
Yeah, and we can't see that menu.
Okay, we can, we can, we'll be happy to send you a copy, and staff has a copy too.
Okay.
Steak Florentine, Pasta Genovese, Carbonara, Putanesca, many delicious items. It's, it's really good food. And we think that's good, being across from the courthouse, near City Hall and the police station. There's a lot of hungry people there who need good food to eat, so we're, we're, we're happy to offer that. Upstairs, a micro hotel. This is a boutique hotel. It's a extremely edgy concept. Five rooms, each with its own bath, true to the historical reservation, renovation. And then in back, the offices for the Paharonian, along with internship programs for local college students who want to learn about the media business.
Dan, I don't mean, Dana, I don't mean to interrupt, but can we see some of the slides? We only have the one slide up, and I'd love to be able to see a lot of your, how you're presenting the materials.
You're just seeing one, I'm, I'm flipping-
We only have one slide that I'm seeing.
Oh, sharing is plus. I'm sorry. Why? How do I do that? I hit live? Zoom share.
I, I don't mean to spoil the train of thought there. I want to share this as much as I can and love to be able to see the concept as we go through.
I'm going to stop here, I think. Okay. There you go. Can you see?
There you go.
Okay, okay, so that is, we, the concept behind this is a five-room hotel would not be economically viable if you had to bear the cost of a front desk. Once you eliminate the front desk, you save about $200,000 to $300,000 a year. This is fully automated. So it's, it's basically a contactless hotel. You come in, you punch in your key code or, or put your phone up to the app. The door is open and boom, there's no, it's, it's basically an unstaffed hotel. It's like a high-end professionally executed Airbnb-type experience. Let me see, now. Mobile app for check-in and checkout. Can you see that? Did it switch to the mobile app? Okay, do you want me to go back and show you the, the restaurant slides? Let me just go through those real quickly. This, this is one of the working sketches of the restaurant, open market, open seating. Although that could change with COVID, we may go for some, some booth-type environment. The initial concept was, was banquet rooms. Once again, that may change as well, given the pandemic. Pasta-based restaurant. That's the green roof, concept sketch, beehives on top. Can you, everybody see those? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's an example of the menu that, that, the initial concept menu that we've put out there. The pricing and the, and the concepts will change, of course, but this is, this is an example of the type of thinking that has gone into this. The boutique hotel upstairs, what we've done is we've kept the original walls. We've added bathrooms, so it keeps the historical integrity of the building. Five guest rooms, beautiful views of downtown Watsonville, private baths, and card keys that are, are just codes that open the rooms. And there's no need for a front desk. It's all going to be, it's called an invisible service hotel, and I'll get to that in a second with the office space in back. This is the concept of invisible service, no onsite staff. Everything has been virtualized, but it's a luxury boutique hotel. Virtual check-in, checkout, themed reservation, themed recommendations to get people into town and experience other things about the Pahravalli. This is an example, and I've been to all these hotels, I've been studying these. This is the 404 Hotel in Nashville. You can see thick Carrero marble, subway tiles, high-end furnishings, spiral staircase, a beautiful experience at a low price point. These are the kind of amenities that you get in a $400 or $500 hotel room for under $200 because of the service model that's been developed. And this is what Watsonville needs. This is what you should have to bring in guests. This is the other hotel that we've studied as a model, the Local Hotel in Philadelphia. I've stayed there as well. An awesome experience at a great price point through this new model of invisible service. It's, it's a micro hotel breakthrough that Invis will be testing out in Watsonville before rolling out throughout the world. So this will be the test case for this new technology hotel hospitality company, which will, we think, help put Watsonville on the map. Then the creative office space, this is the Good Times Office down there by the, the San Lorenzo River, by the SoCal Avenue Bridge. We renovated that a few years ago. It's a beautiful space, sit-stand desks, modern environment, good lighting, and a great place for people to work, as well as shared desk spaces for interns, creative contributors, freelancers, et cetera, and members of the community to participate. These are the promotional channels through which we'll promote the newspaper or promote the, the restaurant, the building, and Watsonville in general. Morgan Hill Times, Salinas Valley Tribune, Silicon Valley Metro. And we're also have a tremendous nonprofit component as well. Santa Cruz Gives, last year raised $400,000 for the, for Santa Cruz County's nonprofits. And this was something we put together through an innovative model of giving. That's a little bit about my bio. I started at San Jose Downtown Association. I put together a business district that has literally contributed billions to the economic, economic development of downtown San Jose. We've also been involved in watching the redevelopment of, of Los Gattis, of Willow Glen, of Campbell, of Sunnyvale. We've been participating in all these. And based on my experiences in all these areas, I think Watsonville is so ready. It's unbelievable. You just need that defining project to kind of kick it off, and then other investment will follow. This is Joe's, Joe's bio. Joe is a resident of this area, lives off Route 152, and will be heavily involved in this project. James Solata is a Santa Cruz County-based historical consultant, who is probably one of the leading consultants in Northern California in terms of historical renovations. He's working with us as a consultant to the project to ensure the integrity of the, the building and the renovation. You can't get anybody better than, than Jim Solata. Turner Skater Development is a development partner and most likely an investment partner in this to make sure it gets done. They have 3 million square feet of commercial space in Silicon Valley and have done, you know, everything right up to Hewlett-Packers headquarters. So this is the kind of investment strength that we can bring to the table. Swenson is the construction partner. They're very familiar with the building. They've worked on it in the past. And, and they want to do this as well and, and handle the construction. So it's top-flight every step of the way. Bright Zandt Dine Lab out of Portland, they've done our other offices and have a unique aesthetic that will be defining in this area, because it's not going to look like every other remodel. And maintain the integrity of, of the structure, along with modernist touches that will be hip, that will be targeted towards millennials, and just give a really cool, people-friendly feel to the place. Mark Ritchie is our real estate consultant, one of another top name who's working with us on this project to make it happen. He'll be handling leasing and helping us with the real estate negotiations. And then Santa Cruz County Bank is our financial partner, and we believe that they are very interested in seeing this project come to life as well. And then Jeannie Johnson, whom all of you know, she will be here onsite, managing the day-to-day, making sure that there is engagement with the community and that when you're, when you need someone to talk to, she is there to make sure everything runs well. And that's it. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have. Thank you.
And we are going to give you, I'm going to give the council opportunity to ask questions, make comments. But before we do that, Beatrice has to talk to the Spanish-speaking community. So Beatrice?
Si por favor, algunas personas que están escuchando esta junta en español, por favor levantan su mano así sabemos si necesitamos quedarnos con el intérprete o si se puede ir. Por favor, levanten la mano que se encuentra en la pantalla. Gracias.
Yo puedo también aceptar preguntas en español, no problema.
Thank you for that. Okay, so this is an opportunity for the council members to ask questions, and we will be asking questions after the next presentation also. So we'll begin with Aurelio. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. What's your timeline on this project?
Our initial target was 2021. I have a feeling, it, it depends on the, you know, how long the, the negotiations take, the availability of contractors and construction materials, and the city's willingness to approve zoning and handle the inspections. So, you know, my guess is at the earliest, late 2021, but it, it, it may spill over into 2022.
So, so do you think that the market will upswing by then? Because I mean, you know, the market for the restaurant business right now is not so good, and it wasn't so good before COVID. Per se, because they were struggling, especially in the city of Watsonville.
I, I, okay, so one of the things that I've put into my thought about all of this is a forced adaptation of, given the market structure and given what the pitch of COVID has, has thrown at us. And it is something that trying to adhere to-
And it is something that trying to adhere to not only the quality of product, but adhere to what I was trying to convey before, before is an open door sort of scenario. And let me put it quite frankly, I'm not in this for the money. What I'd like to do is, is work to create something where the pricing fluctuates based on income and adhere to something that, that benefits everyone. Food for life, you know, all of those cliches that are attached to. One of the things we've learned in the COVID, you know, era is that everybody's forced to eat with their family every night, you know? And by I say forced, it's like now everyone's got baking bread at home and things like that. And you can't get flour and yeast anymore at the grocery stores because everyone's getting recreative with it. And I'd like to bring that sort of mentality of the family and sharing concept into a open door situation in Watsonville. We're going to go outside of the box a bit as far as how we manage and keep the costs low for everyone involved while feeding and supplying an income for those who participate in the operation. I'm very excited, but it is very different what I'm thinking.
I have a question, I have a concern because I know that you're the modern motel hotel or B and B, but you mentioned they did a possibility of employment of 50 to 100 people, but you automatically eliminated employment opportunities by being a self-service B and B. So how do, how are you calculating the 50 to 100 employees?
That includes all of the, what we consider the market property, the restaurant property, the wine sharing and local goods establishment all in one. So that's counting all of the employees from outside for all of the operations. We would like to squeeze into the box and port. And this is also keeping the Pajaronian staff in Watsonville. And additionally, we haven't eliminated the staff. We, we have people, you know, there's not going to be someone sitting at the counter waiting for reservations, but they are going to be, you know, there are, there, there obviously have to be people who clean the rooms, who, who wash the towels and perform these other services. So that will be done. It's just not going to be someone standing behind a desk waiting for people to check in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ari?
Thank you. I don't really have that many questions. I want to go online and check out some of these other things. I'm, I am completely intrigued by how you keep describing the restaurant and how you're coined the, I don't know, it's kind of like what we do in education. We have all this diverse learning community at the same time. We're constantly, you know, rearranging things. So I, I, okay, so I'm curious about that. But I don't know if you could go any further since it's concept right now.
Okay, so based on the fact that, okay, so I live over the hill off of 152 on the Gilroy side, and I come into Watsonville frequently, not only to go to the beach. I bought my tractor in Watsonville. You know, a lot of those things that, you know, have become part of my life is getting over the hill. When we talked about this back last winter and spring, I visited the property and noticed that there was a homeless support center close by. And it immediately triggered a thought in my head about how not to shy away from it, but to perform some sort of outreach, not only through hiring, but working with the staff that are managing that, to leave the doors open for anyone who has, you know, ready, ready hands and feet and able and want to learn and work with me. The menu is very simple. Granted, it's Italian, but I did that based on the simple fact that I'm trying to target an awareness for something that's sort of out of the box for a normal Watsonville, what you consider a communal diner or, you know, what is a normal thing. We're trying to give a bit of attraction through the cuisine, but also leave it simple enough so anyone that's willing and able can come in and perform and get paid. That's quite it. And given the fact that, you know, the deep dark secret about, you know, Italian food with pastas, that the costs are relatively low, so long as you're not creating the pasta yourself, and that's something that we'll juggle with. But if we work with the local growers, if we work with the partnerships that I've formed throughout my years across the country and get some creative and nimble and generous hands, we can try to bring raw product in at incredibly low cost as well as highlight the people that have brought and shine and try to shine a light on Watsonville for what it's great for, you know? And that's through all of the farms and communities that everybody who lives in Watsonville knows, but it's not on everybody's plate when they're coming through or outside of the area. We want to shine a light on it by being different and by being an open door and open seat for anyone of any level of income to feed them and provide them with, you know, the nutrients. Then I, I think it will bring a lot of attention. And I'm excited.
That is a really different concept, that's for sure, especially in today's world. You said late 2021. I was unsure if that meant finish or start to, to develop.
Well, starting.
Early into 2022.
Starting depends on, you know, how the negotiations go with the city and the plan approval. So that's, the, the start date is not fully within our control, but given, you know, given all the approvals and, and the, you know, the, the legal work that is obviously going to occur when the city attorney gets to it. So we're, we're going to, you know, I would say within a year of handling all that, we, we can get to, we can get the construction done and open the, the facility. Just, just so you know, the, the office that I'm standing in right now. We, we purchased the building and, and did a renovation and occupied it within 30 days. So we know how to work fast and Joe does too. We're, we're entrepreneurs. We.
Thank you.
Our hands are in it. I'm not going to, you know, wave my wand from Gilroy and make this happen. I want to be in it.
Okay.
We're, we're hands on.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate the answers. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Felipe.
You know, I, I, I noticed the local winemaker on the bottle that you had, there was actually a bread maker in Watsonville. When you're talking about the restaurant, there's a restaurant that's right below the citizen in, in Sacramento. I think it's called The Grange, but I read their little thing about this movement called farm to table movement. And, you know, Watsonville being predominantly agriculture. And I noticed that there they had actually strawberries from Watsonville. They actually name off where all the, their foods from.
Right.
And are you, do you guys plan to like source local, local food, local wines?
I mean, Joe, Joe, Joe goes, when he has his restaurant, he goes to the guy who slaughters the pigs. He knows every single producer. I'm not trying to blow steam. It's just one of those things like I had a daily menu at the last restaurant that I owned. And beyond that, the restaurant would change mid-service because I was only ordering one animal at a time and working with Love Apple Farms up in the Santa Cruz Mountains and working with local growers. And I'd only get a certain amount of product that was sort of allocated to me based on what I was going to produce. So mid-service, we'd start swapping things out and making adjustments and things like that. You're not going to find something as incredibly diverse as that because we're trying to keep our costs down and we're trying to keep it. So I'm not sitting there, you know, spinning my wheel, trying to figure out what's next, but to work with the local growers that may choose to take products that are affected by frost and can't get them on the trucks, can't get them quick enough to market, to work with us to get them in somebody's belly at a low price real quick. So we're going to try to be a, you know, last step before the compost pile, so to speak, to work with them to bring products that are fresh out of the ground within steps of the front door to make it exciting and fun for everybody. That's not putting spoiled products out, that's ripe products out because they're not ripe when they get on a truck and everybody knows that. So we're excited.
And the, the internship, internships with students that you spoke of, that's what, you intend to do that with Watsonville High School or with Gabriel College or both?
Well, I, I would say for the, for the newspaper, it's both. And you know. Anyone ready and willing, you know? I brought in people in culinary school who wanted to learn from me and people just off the street who needed to, you know, learn and get their hands and skill sets so they could start moving. And this isn't, you know, free employment from my aspect of like, we, we move them very quickly into a pay scale where they're learning and earning at the same time. You know, it is something to be said for if they're coming out of culinary school or if they're in a local, you know, community college, if it's satisfying, you know, grade scale for them or something that they've got to achieve, we're going to work with all of the professors and everyone involved with any community organization to try to flood the floors with the locals, not going to import.
Okay, moving on, Lowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight and presenting a very unique and special proposal. You know, as, as somebody who grew a lot of organic vegetables and a few pigs and a few cows and certainly milked a lot of cows, I'm, I'm interested in your concept here of fresh and, 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 you know, local and whatever we can do to highlight the Pajaro Valley. I know we can't talk about price or terms here, but have you got some general idea of a budget for operation of this kind of unique venue?
Budget wise for the restaurant is probably going to run between 300 to 500,000 dollars based on the fees attached by what utilities are going to make us operate. That's grease traps and interceptors and all of those things what happens underground. And what we will do to limit the impact on, you know, neighbors and the ecology of the area. We're, we're probably not going to put fryers in because of the vapors that come out and because of the structure of the way that the vents come in as far as remote are concerned. So we're going to try to build something that has a low impact, but at the same time, equipment and restructuring of the property as far as the framing of the doors and putting the bathrooms in for guests and all of those things to bring it up to code for the Department of Environmental Health, all of that costs money. And, you know, we're ready and understand the cost. We're not going to fly into the operation not understanding what we're getting into. And I've currently been involved with over what 36 properties, both in the U.S. and outside of the U.S. as far as construction. So we know what we're getting into. The benefit being that, you know, with a, an understanding of the local government to see and help us facilitate and streamline the operation of construction, I think we can achieve what we want to without breaking budgets and going crazy unless we discover something that's, you know, off. So. Lowell, to answer your question for the hotel, based on 65% occupancy and our projected room rates, it will generate about a quarter million dollars a year in revenue. And, and on top of that will be transient occupancy tax. So this will be a contributor to the tourism funds available for the city and county.
Okay, moving on to Trina.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, it sounds to me like it's a sustainable kind of restaurant that I know that there's like 180 degrees or something like that in terms of not only do you have the ocean that's nearby in terms of any of that to come into the restaurant, but, you know, breadbasket of the world kind of thing here with our valley of the, of the fruits and vegetables. So I totally get where the pitch of the food is there. And it sounds like there, there's a restaurant in SoCal called Home, and it sounds like a little bit more of that kind of environment. And I, I want to let you know that regardless of whichever moves forward, I think it's a win-win if there's any way we can possibly have both. I mean, that would be an awesome, awesome challenge and an awesome goal to have you and the arts come downtown and facilitate in any way possible to make that happen.
Trina, I think there are opportunities for collaboration. One is we can invite PV Arts to curate the art collection through rotating art shows, both in the offices, the rooms and, and downstairs to give them exposure, not only to onsite, but through the media properties that will be occupying the building. And secondly, performance space. You know, having music and art and performance onsite is, is a terrific thing. And, and as I said, if we wind up, you know, being the chosen bidder on this, I would definitely support anything that could be done by the city, by local agencies to build a permanent home for PV Arts. And I would say, let's go bigger than 15,000 feet. And by the way, their consultant, Judy Stabile, I know her well. She has an amazing history and she, she's great with community work. So let's, let's think really big on this.
Well, I know we definitely have a passion for the arts in this community and it's something that are, it's been a big void for us not having enough of that here. So we're, we're always doing the promotion on that in any way possible. The, what kind of, what kind of, I mean, the structure is going to need to be redone. What, what are you looking at as the investment to get this to getting the keys to the door and opening up for business? How much money do you think this building would need for the purpose you're wanting to put in this building?
Well, it's definitely, definitely in the seven figures. We, you know, we, that's, that's one of the reasons why we've brought in a historical consultant and two of the best construction and development partners we can find in this because they, they know, they know these questions. I think throwing out an actual figure at this point is, is a little bit risky because we, we need to get professionals to go in there, do the tests. You have value at destruction. Yeah, make sure that all the environmental clearances are taken care of. Talk to the city planning department about what are going to be required. See if the handicapped and retrofit work that was done in the last renovation is adequate or whether a new, new level of seismic and environmental and accessibility is going to be required. It already has an elevator, you know, so, so we believe that there's accessibility. The, the bathrooms do have some accessibility, so, but they were built to standards of, you know, 15 or 20 years ago, I believe. So there, there's too many questions to put an actual price tag on it, but it's definitely in the seven figures.
Well, I, I think part of it is local jobs, local hires. I mean, that's the kind of the direction I was taking on that. We did have an Italian restaurant that came downtown and they were over at the Marimar down a couple of blocks from this location. And I truly miss having options, dinner options downtown. So that's interesting about the, the menu choices and, and the sustainability of everything that you're looking at to try to put a menu together. Well, have you done anything about the demographics to know who, what interests and which people would be able to come in? I, I know you talked a bit about a price point, but understanding the demographics of Watsonville and what they're favorable in, in terms of their diets and, and choices. And obviously, you know, we're, we're doing what we possibly can in terms of the healthy choices. I mean, I think that's a really, really big, big ticket item for us when it comes to the food and bringing them into this community.
Well, I think that the benefit of the health being the non-processed portion of what we're trying to offer. Now, when I would go around the country or outside of country when we were hired or consulting to build a property, the first thing I would do is evaluate, you know, the neighborhoods and the, the population to see what was affordable, what could fit into the box of what was necessary, what was popular in the overall, you know, mystique and what I could highlight through my efforts. So I basically build every kind of restaurant with the exception of Southeast Asian, being Vietnamese or Chinese, those are sort of my weaknesses. North African I've done, Indian I've done, Japanese I've done. I did a sushi, sushi steakhouse, all those things. So I'm not trying to make Watsonville fit to my Italian strength. I'm trying to say that even though I'm Italian, so forgive me, that, that might be the sort of affordable option for what will work best, given the community, given the immediate ability to get what's out of the ground onto the table and, and to put it forward in a cost-effective manner. I'm not, I, I used to work with David Kinch at a men race. I'm not, I, I used to work with David Kinch at a men race and now one of the few three stars in California. And I'm not trying to remanufacture dishes so I can charge three hundred dollars a head. I'm not, I, I see the benefit and I see the smile on the faces when something that's six dollars warms your tummy and makes you just, you know, walk away with a bright, you know, step in your foot. That's how I got into this business.
Fresh fruits and vegetables are high in nutritional content. You know, the farm-to-table concept is spot on.
Local olive oil, you know, pressers, all of those things can be brought into the operation from, you know, minutes of the front door.
And the Mediterranean diet is one of the healthiest in the world, low, good for, good for heart disease with, with, you know, cooked tomatoes and olive oil. But also I know, look, I'm, I'm a father of three young daughters and, you know, there's a lot of families in Watsonville. Joe has young kids too and they love pasta. If I tell them I'm taking them out for pasta, they'll go. You know, and I'd rather have them eat that than pizza, frankly.
And I'll have one last question, Mayor, and this one has to do with the internship. I don't know how strong or robust the Cabrillo College or the high school is in writing. And you, you mentioned an internship type of program. What, what do you see that looking like? Or the number of students coming through or job opportunities that come from that? Can you talk a little bit about that part of the business model?
Yeah, well, we want to train the next generation of journalists and not just print journalists, but multimedia journalists, digital, web, mobile, app developers. We, we feel it's really important that the community of Watsonville has, has, has the digital skills to compete in the new economy. We've talked to Digital Nest about it. Jacob is an amazing guy and runs an unbelievable program and we've invited him to, to, to be a part of it if he chooses to be. There's, you know, and he's, he's, he's looking to expand his operation. But that's, once again, that's a concept, not a, not, not a commitment there because it's up to him. But we, we have, we have done this kind of outreach. You know, it's so important that people get exposed to journalism, not just as writers, but as consumers of journalism. We see what's happening right now in Washington C.D.C. with, you know, the distortion of facts and the, the, the way in which people consume information. So by making people as astute as possible, you know, and creating writers who, who, who know how to challenge, investigate, get to the facts is so critical to the future. It's, it's important to our culture, it's important to our society and, and our future, you know, as a country. So we want to be a part of that. And that's why we want to bring in the next generation of journalists to learn with us.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Paco.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. I have nothing but respect for the Parroonian and anybody that's willing to sort of invest in our downtown and our community. So thank you, gentlemen, for that. My, my first question is just, who, who in the community did you talk to about this project? And the, the theme of the project or the, the concept of the project besides city staff?
Um, you know, we've, we've, I think Jeannie and Tony might be able to answer that question a little bit better than us because they're out there in, in the community more. We've developed this as a high-level concept based on our experiences of watching downtown after downtown in this region from Santa Cruz, Los Gatos, Willow Glen, Sunnyvale, Campbell, the Sofi District of downtown San Jose, all of which we've been intimately involved in. So we've seen what works. And, you know, that's, I, you know, going, going out to the community and asking what they want is a good thing. And we will want to do that and make sure the community understands the project. But on the other hand, some of the greatest things are done just, you know, on the power and strength of an idea. And we're very confident that this will work. This will, this will bring money into the city. And, you know, talking about food and a place to stay and making the building look better. We believe that we'll have tremendous community support for that.
I have a funny story. I had a down tree on my property and I needed a chainsaw and lo and behold, it was Sunday and here comes Craigslist to the rescue. I drove over to the hill to Watsonville to purchase a chainsaw back in early January of this year. We were in development about the idea stream for what was coming forward. And I asked the fellow that I bought the chainsaw from, I said, you know, do you have any sort of, you know, desire for an Italian restaurant? And he was, he was a bit shocked why I was talking to him like this while I was giving him cash for his chainsaw. But at the same time, he got into depth about what he missed about the culture of Watsonville. And I, I can't comment on that except to say that I want to embrace the ideas of all of the people that, you know, have given their heart to the community and put it on a plate. That's what it's all about for me. So it, it was funny with him, you know? He was very excited about the idea of a nice warm, low-priced pasta dish coming forward. So.
And if, and if you want us to, if that's a requirement, we'll, we'll happily put this proposal in the newspaper, hold, hold a series of meetings. We would encourage you to do that with the other bidder if that's the, you know, if that's a requirement and, you know, we can see what the, what the community likes.
You know, I, I'm not going to make anything a requirement. I think if anything, it should come from, if, if you choose to do it and if you want to take people's input, I think that, that'd be up to you. I think it's always appreciated, but I, you know, I was just sort of wondering. My second question, you sort of mentioned this idea that, you know, this project would be accessible to all, but you were very specific in mentioning millennials. And so I'm sort of wondering, so it's two questions here. One, you talk about millennials. Are you talking about like, what percentage would be the millennials in the city of Watsonville? And then the millennials outside of the city of Watsonville that you'd be targeting?
Yeah, by the way, my comment was strictly related to the workspace, how we've, you know, created a modern workspace that, you know, is, is friendly to millennials. But by no means is that exclusive. Frankly, I, I hire a lot of people who are retirees and senior citizens, you know, at our offices. And then in terms of the restaurant, there's no restrictions. This is food that everybody's going to enjoy, from little kids to older adults, to, to, to families, to low-income people, to high-income people. This, this, this is something for everybody. This, this is not price exclusive. So we are not just targeting millennials, Gen Xers, baby boomers, everybody's welcome.
I appreciate you saying that because, you know, I, I do think of, you know, this looks like a, a good space and it looks like an interesting space. I think as someone like my dad, who is an immigrant, doesn't speak English, who's very technology challenged, I guess, he's, he's not as advanced as some of us. So, you know, opening a room with a nap seems pretty tough. But, you know, you know, are things going to be in Spanish? And, you know, just, you know, my, someone like my dad, I think, would never step into, into a building like this because of how intimidated he would be.
So, you know. I, I think he would enjoy the restaurant. And, you know, certainly the, the hotel will be multilingual because there will be visitors from all over the world who will come there. So, so yes, it will be language-friendly. And by the way, the Parroonian under Tony Nunes, with the supportive, with the support of a Facebook grant, we've started putting articles in Spanish, you know, on a very regular basis and on the web. And they've been doing very well. So the Parroonian, for the first time in, in its history, is now becoming a bilingual newspaper. So, and, and, and I'm a Spanish speaker, I taught myself Spanish. So, you, you know, you definitely have our full support on that.
Okay, and really just, you know, all, all my questions are really coming down to, you know, the idea of gentrification and how people in this community are really worried about that. Because, you know, I look at your space and objectively speaking, it's a nice space. It's very beautiful. I think it's, it's modern, it's urban, it's hipster. But, you know, what about it, you know, it's very generic at the same time. I sort of feel like what, what about it celebrates Watsonville? It's people, it's history, it's culture. Like, you know, if I wanted to go to one of these places, I could easily just go over the, the hill as you sort of mentioned and grab one of these places. But, you know, what about it is, you know, it, it's sort of, how do you integrate it into the culture of Watsonville? And I'm not seeing it at this point, you know? I appreciate the food, I appreciate the sourcing locally, eating healthy and stuff. But just everything else, I, I don't know how it is sort of thought as a piece of, as a part of Watsonville, I guess. You know, it just seems like it, this would be there and it'd be like, it wouldn't be Watsonville. It just seems like that.
Everything about it is Watsonville. This will be, you know, hopefully part of the new Watsonville community identities evolved. If you, if, if you always look to the past, you never, you never evolve. So we're looking at, you know, trends and what the future of the community is. Because people in the community will either demand, you know, amenities or they will leave because they, the, the, their tastes can be satisfied outside the area. So this will help keep people in Watsonville. It will bring people to Watsonville and everything about it is Watsonville. The building is Watsonville. I've studied the history of the building and the architect in a million weeks and, and, and the Parroonian. You know, the, the, the oldest business in Watsonville alongside Martinelli's couldn't be more Watsonville. We have the, the, the archives and the history and the intellectual property for the entire history of the city and we can open that up. We are writing about Watsonville every, every day, you know, on our websites. We own the website, which we plan to develop, watsonville.com. The food will be sourced from Watsonville, will be prepared by people in Watsonville, by people who live in Watsonville and, and encouraging people to, to, to visit Watsonville. And, and when they come, they will have a great place to sleep and, and great places to eat. So, you know, there, there's nothing about it. This is not, you, you know, this is not anything you will see anywhere else. This is completely unique and it will be written about. And, you know, would you object if the New York Times came out and wrote about it? You know, when you were visiting Watsonville, this is the place you should go and eat and stay? That's, that's what we hope to achieve.
Thank you both for your, your answers. And just to keep things moving, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to, to the next person, Mayor.
Thank you.
The next person is me. And so I appreciate all the questions being asked by our council members and so I only have one. I've never have stayed at a boutique hotel. And so in terms of the invisible service, does that mean I would be paying two hundred dollars to make up my own bed? And how do you market to me?
No, you, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be making your own bed. What, what it means is there's, you know, the people drop back, they wait till you leave your room and then they come in and make your room. That's, that's all that means. It, it means that it's not an intrusive experience.
Well, that's what happened.
When you, when you check in, you don't have to stop at the front desk. You're already checked in. You, you get tired, you just got off the plane or from a trip. You just walk straight to your room, let yourself in as you would your own home. If there's a problem, there's a phone number, you call and, and then you get the service.
And because of the partnership with us on the ground floor, there'd be immediate attention for any issues that would arise.
Okay, so in terms of what makes it then invisible? I'm still not understanding, other than the checking in.
Yeah, there, there's no lobby. There's no lobby.
Oh, okay.
There's no check-in. You don't have to go and stop there and go through all this, you know, hassle on the check-in. You just walk straight to the room and open the door and, you know, flop into bed.
So that's what makes it invisible. Versus, you know, I stay in many, many hotels and I always appreciate, I leave early enough because they can come in early enough to make up my bed and clean my, you know, bathroom and, you know, do the reckoning stuff. So that will still take place?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, okay. So with that, I just wanted to say to the public, I know it's almost nine thirty and I hope you just stay with us. We're going to have another presentation and it'll be after the second presentation that will go out to the public to hear comments from you. So with that, Mara, would you introduce the next applicant?
Yes, of course. It'll be my pleasure again to introduce Judy Stabeel with Parro Valley Arts. Like I said, she's the treasurer of PV Arts Board and has been a great supporter of many, many art projects with the city and also has a very exciting proposal for your review. Judy?
Okay, now, am I up?
Yes, Judy.
Okay. Very good. Well, again, my name is Judy Stabeel and I'm the board treasurer for Parro Valley Arts and I'm presenting on their behalf. Our mission is to bring the community together through the arts. We were actually incorporated in nineteen eighty-six and we've been fulfilling our mission since then. Our exhibits are admission-free. Our building right now is ADA accessible, as will it be at the Porter Building. And we're currently located at thirty-seven Sutton Street. I'm here tonight to ask you to invest in our creative and cultural community by supporting the Parro Valley Arts bid for the Porter Building to create a cultural arts center, enabling us to expand our programming while transforming the building into a valuable community asset and visitor destination. Our vision is to provide an inclusive, safe and professional space where the community can create and share their creativity, their culture and their history. PVA serves as a bridge between our community and our artistic resources. PVA contributes to the region's economic and cultural development while playing an important role in extending educational resources for students and adults. So the proposed use for the building would be to have a retail and gallery space to produce our professional quality exhibits, which will in turn support local and regional, regional artists through the sale of their artwork. We'd like to have a multipurpose room for community programming and use, which will help the smaller performing arts group have a place to practice and perform. And we've got a variety of people already interested. We'd like to have classroom and workshop space for seniors and youth. And then artist studios, which would generate year-round revenue to offset the increased operational costs of us being in a larger building. And we're talking about a building that's ten times the size of our current building. So why PVA? We're a five oh one C three nonprofit business that provides a downtown destination for Watsonville residents as well as out-of-town guests. During non-pandemic conditions, our, our annual audience is about fourteen thousand adults and students for both our gallery and public art projects. We believe that with a larger facility, more programming and extended hours, our audience and participation will grow. So who visits PVA? We have businesses, service organizations and clubs. This is CASA, UCSC, MPC and Cabrillo College students, lifelong learners, preschool through high school students, art lovers and artists, people interested in specific topics, friends and families and people who buy art. PVA's plans and our mission is aligned with the city's strategic plan under the Economic Development Area in terms of job creation and workforce development, downtown revitalization and community events. In terms of workforce development, our Experience Art Educational Program supplements the really great programs that PDUSD is implementing right now within our school systems. And what they do and what we do together is to develop creative and critical thinking skills of students who are our future workforce. Our programs expand young people's experience by providing access to imagery and educational exercises that are compatible with state educational visual and performing arts standards. Students make art and show their art with PVA. They look, they discuss and they learn. This is a sample or the cover page of a curriculum that we have developed. Karen Lemon did this for us. It's exhibit based. It was done for our Campesinos, workers of the land. And it goes along with our virtual tour. This is free to teachers. It's geared towards middle school to high school, but colleges are using it too. And we do this in English and in Spanish. So under downtown revitalization, our project will increase the visibility and viability of the Porter Building as well as the downtown area by creating a beautiful place for people to visit in which lasting memories and impressions will be created while maintaining the historic qualities of the building. We will be providing engaging activities for all age groups and accessible creative hub for the community. PVA is a growing business. We're small, but we're growing. But we won't be competing with other existing downtown businesses. However, our patrons will visit local restaurants and surrounding retailers. And we will maximize the economic activity on Main Street through increased visitors, programs and events. In 2012, uh, the Arts Council Santa Cruz did, uh, an arts and economic prosperity study of Santa Cruz County and found that arts and culture is a $38 million business. Well, it was in 2012. In terms of revenue to local governments, at that point in time, it returned about $1.4 million in revenue. In terms of what our patrons or customers will sell outside of the, or what they will purchase outside of the gallery, their average spending is right around $29.19. And I would venture to guess that it's probably more up until the pandemic. And it's, we've got it categorized by, um, residents and non residents. And they spend the money on meals, refreshments, gifts, souvenirs, transportation and lodging. But what do they spend inside the gallery? We believe that we are cultivating cultural tourists. Five-year analysis of PVA art sales by zip code show that 16% of the sales were to Watsonville or 95076 residents. 44% are purchased from the rest of the county, 4% for the greater Bay area, 3% from the rest of the state, 3% from out of state and 21%, we didn't, we don't have figures on. How much did they spend in 2019? PVA showed the artwork of 361 artists and over a thousand student artists. Gross artwork sales exceeded $89,000. 55 to 70% of that goes back to the artist, but we do collect sales tax on the full gross amount. And the 55 to 75% or 70% depends on whether they're a member of PVA or not. In 2020, we've been closed for almost seven months and our sale, sales are still at $70,000. I've seven, yes. Okay, so in terms of revenue to the city, we know it's not a lot, but we will, we, if there will be local sales tax, of course, the income off of the sale of the Porter Building. And then the future reuse of the building at 37 Sutton Street. In terms of community events that enlighten, enliven the downtown, we will match our operating hours to other downtown businesses and have a greater presence in downtown events such as the strawberry festival and the wine beer and art walk. PVA receptions are events. And by increasing our usable space, we will be able to provide more flexible and inclusive uses for visual and performing arts. So our timeline's a little bit longer than Dan's. We would hope that we can purchase the building by the end of 2020. And we have had a donor step up who is willing to fund the purchase price. In 2021, I'm sorry, that was 2020, 2021, we would have to initiate, initiate a capital campaign to fund the construction costs. We don't have the money. But we will ask for it and we'll apply for grants. So in terms of completion, honestly, by the time we do permits and design work, we have initial designs, but we know that we're going to need to adapt that. We really realistically feel that completion would be 2022 to 2025. So the Watsonville community has been trying to establish a multi-use arts center for over 20 years. We recognize that the Porter Building is not the end vision, but a stepping stone and an incubator for a larger project. We're not looking for or dependent upon making a profit off of the property. We are looking to secure a home for our future by owning a building that will provide operating income to offset our investment and allow us to rely less upon donated and grant income in the future. Our programs are free, accessible and reach a wide variety of interests which cross economic barriers. We're a stable nonprofit with a proven track record. PVA has been consistently providing program for three, programming for 34 years, regardless of earthquakes, floods, economic downturns and the pandemic. And we will continue to do so with your support. PVA is a vibrant presence of which the city and the community can be proud of. Our programs and mission are aligned with the city and the strategic, the city's strategic plan and the downtown vision. We ask that you choose Paharo Valley Arts. Thank you.
Judy, thank you so much for your presentation. And so now I'll open it up to the council members for questions and we'll start with Ari.
You know, I don't have, as a teacher, I totally understand who you guys are and what you mean to the community. So I, I guess the only thing I'd have a question about is the development time period. I, I know. And I'm, I'm not sure there's any answers to that at this point, right? So that's, so is there anything you want to just say? Add to that? You know, I'm just, I, I, it was a wider range of, you know, like up to 2025. So that's all. I just wanted to, that's the only question in my mind about this project and how long it will be to.
Sure. I, I understand your concern. Um, we have the initial investment to purchase the building, but it does take time to raise money and we really feel that it's going to take another one to two million dollars on top of the purchase price to develop our dream. And it takes time to raise money.
Well, I thank you. It was, that was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it. I know you were stressed, but it was a lot of fun learning all the details of, of the plan. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll move on now to Felipe. Felipe, are you there?
Okay. You know, I initially, I thought this was going to be for like a quick timeline, but, um, so let's say it's 20, let's hypothetically, like if it was 2023, and you said reuse of the Brennan Building. Yeah. The, how, how long would that be? Would, would you want to use that for, for like an additional time or like as soon as you're ready to, to, to go on the, uh, Main Street bill, the Porter Building, I mean, uh, it would be ready to reuse the, the old building?
Absolutely. As soon as we're ready to move into the Porter Building, you can have this lovely building back.
Oh, I see. Okay. And, um, is the, I'm not sure, uh, someone on the board also might know, but is the nonprofit, the PVR's nonprofit also built, taken, uh, revenue for the, um, like to, for a capital campaign? Or do you have to create a new nonprofit for that capital campaign for the building structure?
We are totally ready to take in everybody's money.
Okay. That makes it, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Lowell.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I guess my question is more about the future and the vision. Can you, can you expand? You know, beyond the Porter Building vision, what, what happens if everything works really well? What's the next step?
Well, we believe that the Porter Building is our end home. However, the broader community has been meeting its focus groups. And I'm also part of that committee to build something bigger, but we're looking 10 years down the road. It, it's, it takes a long time to find a property, to build out a property, to raise the money. And so the broader community plan for an arts and performing center is well down the road and we'd like to be a part of that, but we still feel that our programming can be done from the Porter Building.
Thanks so much.
Okay, moving on to Trina.
Thank you, mayor. Can you talk a little bit about the, the need for space for artists in our community? Because I know that you're looking at having some of the space available for that. And, and what the, the difference is between what we have here in Watsonville and what we have at the other parts of the county in terms of the balance or disproportionate share of the resources South County has with the North County?
Well, studio spaces in North County, you've got the Tannery. You've got the Swift Street extension, that Mission Street, Swift Street, um, extension. Mid County, um, you've got 17th Avenue, Aptos, there's a, a building that has artist studio space. It's industrial, but it has studio space. In Watsonville, there's very little studio space. There was a local artist that was renting in the Latunich Building, Letnich Building. But it's got to be affordable too. Artists don't make a lot of money. So we have to have a balance in terms of what we need to bring in operational, operationally, what the market will bear on a price per square foot and then what our community can afford. Okay, but we really don't have studio space in Watsonville, not a lot of it.
Yeah. The other part of it, you had some statistics about the sales activity and where the point of origin or where the sales activity comes from. What kind of draw would you expect to expand on by bringing this downtown with, um, people outside of the area that are coming to Watsonville? Wouldn't come to Watsonville for other, for other purposes in terms of, disposable income to spend here?
Uh, well, we get a lot of people from the Los Gatos area, from Monterey, Carmel. We have showing artists that live in those areas. But it's not just the Bay Area and Monterey County that brings people in. You know, we show a variety of artists. We show local artists, student artwork, all the way up to nationally known artists. And when we do a show and we, we do, you know, six to eight shows per year, we draw different crowds and the artists that we show from other areas bring people from other regions. But because the caliber of our shows is so high, all of our shows are well attended and our mailing list goes well beyond the Watsonville area. We have about, um, I think 2,500 people on an email distribution list and quite a few of them are out of the area and continue to visit and support us with memberships.
Um, the other part of it is, can you talk a little bit about the grant funding and the ability of, of getting even some of the donors to help with this? I mean, obviously you've got that believes in the arts. And how would you leverage that? Because you're going to need to leverage that. What is your process or what do you anticipate to be the, the plan to leverage? Um, what it will take to put this together downtown?
Well, in terms of grants, the local grants are drying up a little bit because of the COVID situation. However, um, their national grants are still really available for capital improvement projects. The one that I think is the most viable for us is the National Endowment for the Humanities. And they will give anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000 for a project like this, especially in a historic building where we do humanities work and we have to match it four to one. So that's a lot. I know that's a lot, but it's a good sized grant and they pay out over a period of five years unless we match earlier, in which case they'll pay earlier. In terms of local donors, I think having, having the building purchased, already having Mr. Groner, who's willing to give us the purchase price of the building will enable us to tap into people that already give to us and they're willing to give on a bigger level.
Thank you. I know that we probably have quite a bit of public and other comments, so I will, I will give up my time for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. We'll move on to Paco.
Thank you, mayor. Judy, same thing. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for, you know, wanting to invest in our community and our downtown especially. You know, hey, sort of hate the, a bit that that horse, but you know, that building needs a lot of work, you know, a lot of work. You know, we, there, there's a reason I think only two proposals were submitted and I know when the building was open, you, you know, I, I walked with my CEO just to look at it as well. And, um, so I, I'm sort of wondering, I mean, what, I don't know if you, if maybe you have or, but how, how do you guarantee that even PVR doesn't go under? You know, with such a massive financial sort of burden and then the sustainability piece that you have to sort of keep in mind with the cost of everything going up year after year after year.
No, I understand that. And this is a huge leap for PVA. I mean, let's face it, we're not, we're not made of money. I think part of it is dealing with good local professionals. Spectre Corbett is our architectural firm. They're suggesting that we go with Selden and Sons, which is also a local firm. We've had an engineer out to the property and she does have some concerns. There's one wall, the wall that faces the police building, um, or the civic building, where they can't tell if the structural items were done that were actually on the plans that the city provided us. So there are concerns and anytime you open up a building, you're going to find problems. But the key for us is to raise that money in advance and that's why our timeline is so long. How, 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 how do we guarantee? How does anybody guarantee? How does a restaurant guarantee that they're going to not go under in six months? There's, there are no guarantees, but we have a passionate group of volunteers and supporters that have always pulled us through.
No, I, I understand in that. The only reason I ask this is, you know, I work for a nonprofit and I know how hard sometimes it is to, to get that money, you know, get that money to support good programs and support a good project. So, you know, it's, that's my only worry. I think that's the difference between a nonprofit and, uh, you know, a project like we just heard.
Absolutely.
How far into the capital campaign plan have you gone? Or is it just sort of like in the development phases? Or have you gone out to see, sort of do like a market research to see, you know, supply and demand for your products or for your services? To really build a good sustainable plan?
Well, in, in terms of our development plan, um, not yet. You know, quite frankly, when we put the bid in, we didn't have any money to put into this project. And now we have a donor who's willing to fund the building. So, and when we go out, I think the community will support this. And we will sit down, we will probably have to hire a development person, as we will a project manager and an engineer. We're a small organization. We need to rely on the expertise of others to help us through this.
Okay. Uh, I promise I won't ask any more financial questions. It is a big, a big important decision for sure for the city and PVA. See, uh, uh, you know, sort of the same question that I asked the Paharo Valley Arts group, you know, how do we get somebody like? You know, how do we get somebody like my dad into that building, you know, who is intimidated by, not everything, but you know, he, he was a monolingual immigrant, you know, he loves his community, but you know, I, I would love to bring him to someplace like that, not only somebody like my dad or my parents, but you know, we have a Muslim-American community here. We have an African-American community here. We have Asian-Americans. How do we really bring, you know, some of these non-traditional groups into a space like this?
I think by including them in our programming. Um, and that's kind of the key to, um, our exhibits. It's by bringing in diverse populations, diverse subject matters. Your dad loves you, he's gonna go with you. And it's the same with the rest of the community. You know, I wanna see my son's work. I wanna see my cousin's work. I wanna be a part of that. I wanna make artwork. So, yeah, it's hard to get somebody in the door initially, but it's gonna be a whole lot easier to get them into the Porter Building than it is on Sutton Street where nobody can find us. So I think visibility and access are huge issues, and I think the Porter Building will really help us with that.
And my last question, so that I can sort of keep this going, is just really, you know, we, we've sat in meetings together, you know, we've discussed the future of the arts community in Watsonville. And I know that there was in the past, and sort of some, you know, maybe miscommunication, hard feelings with some of the younger artists, and I'm, I'm wondering what steps PVA has taken to really close that gap and to really make sure that, uh, the entire, you know, art community is included in such a massive project like this?
Well, we've changed the whole makeup of our board. Currently, we are seventy percent Latinx. We have ten board members, and four of them are quite young. I, I've got more energy than I do, to be honest. And we believe that with the addition of these board members, along with those of us that have been around for a while, that we will overcome the communication issues. And in fact, with during our Campesinos show, even though it was only open to the public for eleven days, we had a large part of the community involved in that, the younger Latinx community. And with our show right now, the Mi Casa es tu casa, we have, I wanna say probably fifteen younger artists that possibly haven't shown but one or two pieces in the past here. So it's building up the relationships, the communications. It's working with the Arts Council Santa Cruz to continue our vision, and we're also investing in equity training and equity planning. So we're, I, I feel we're very progressive in terms of trying to involve younger people in our gallery.
Those are, those are my questions. Thank you, Judy. I yield my time, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, fellow councilmen, for those questions. I, I do need to be transparent here, and so I am gonna inform everybody that I am currently the president of the Pajarone Arts Gallery. It's a, it's a great organization, and then they have opened the doors to the community. With that said, question, how many people would the gallery employ overall? And how, what's the employment impact?
Well, currently, we have three part-time employees. We know that when we start doing property management workshops and handling performing artists, we believe that we'll probably have to add two to three staff members. I know that's not a lot, but we also have intern possibilities with this kind of operation also.
But you also have, when you have events, you, you wind up employing or hiring folks, right?
Actually, our events are mostly run by our volunteers. We have a huge, uh, big-hearted volunteer population and that put on our shows and our events. And so it would be possible at some point to get to that, but right now it would be handled by volunteers.
Okay, thank, well, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Judy, I know we've been asking you so many questions, and I only have one question to ask you. Well, actually, two. One is, you said there's gonna be some artist studios upstairs. Do you know how many artist studios you would have?
At this point, it looks like eight to nine studios, probably three thousand, maybe a little bit more square feet. And the going rate on, on space in Watsonville before the pandemic was anywhere from sixty-five cents a square foot to about a dollar twenty-five a square foot. Our hopes were that we would be bringing in about a dollar a square foot, but we have to wait and see how that pans out, especially during the time when we open. We have to see what the market will bear.
Okay, and my second question is, I heard you say that in terms of your multipurpose room, that you would open up for not only performance but for practice. For, and, and this would be in terms of dance. And so that would mean, would that mean having a special floor for that?
It could, as, as with, if the Watsonville Film Festival chose to do screenings, we'd have to have a screen, and we'd have to have sound equipment. There are portable floors that can be used for the dancers, so that's another option. Of course, we're gonna rely on our performing artists to give us the advice that we need in order to build the space out for the community use as we determine. As I say, and I'm sitting in on meetings to continue to build on this operation into something bigger. And so we're gonna have a lot of people giving us a lot of advice, and we welcome that.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're gonna go out to the public now. But first, I want to say to all of you who have sent us emails or letters that have been submitted, they are, they have been added to the council park. So you have been heard by the council members if we've already finished. And quite frankly, there's been so many, I haven't finished reading them all, but I promise I, I will read them all, and they are part of the packet. So that's just to inform you in terms of should you decide you don't need to speak because your letters and emails have already been submitted are part of the park. And so my second question is, I'd like everybody that's going to speak to raise your hand so we can count you, so that way I can determine how much time will be allotted for each of the speakers. So at this point, would you please raise your hand so we can count you?
There are twenty, twenty-six hands up at this time, Mayor.
Okay, with twenty-six hands, each one of you will be given a minute to speak. And, and I apologize that we're having to cut your time off, but that's just a lot. And we still have another item that we know is going to take quite a bit of time. But do know that it has been decided by our city manager that the Parklet item is going to be put to a future meeting. So we only have one other item, which would be reported on safe and sane fireworks, which I know will take a lot of time also. So at this time, keep your hands raised, and you'll be called upon, and you have a minute to speak.
Susan, please go ahead. Susan?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. Um, good evening. My name is Susan Guaralti, and I'm the coordinator of visual and performing arts for Pajarone Valley Unified School District. And I'm here to speak on behalf of PVA and the support that they have given to the Pajarone Valley Unified School District over the years with many different projects and, and the lesson plans and all the virtual tours and everything that they have online to support our teachers, our students, and our families. There's many family activities that go along with the lessons that they do, as well as bringing students and families to the gallery for shows. We have, PVUSD would not be where we are right now without the support of the PVA and, and the volunteers there that have helped educate our students and support of the arts in South County. And I'll yield the rest of my time.
Your time is up, actually, so thank you, Susan. Next.
Valentina, go ahead.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. All right. My name is Valentina Velazquez. I am from Watsonville, California. I lived here for twenty-two years, and I'm in full support of creating this, of the PV Arts and, and getting this bid of the Porter Building. I definitely believe that we in Watsonville, we do not need a five-room hotel. I don't see the purpose in that. And we already have a hotel that's being built down off, down the highway. And also, I wanted to say that Watsonville is already a great place. I know earlier Dan said that he's going to make Watsonville a great place. Watsonville is a great place right now, and the PVA will definitely help raise that greatness that we have of all the artists. And I'm thinking about the future of Watsonville. I hope that I, one day, can raise my children in this town and that there will be an art center for them, because I wish there was an art center when I was a kid here in Watsonville. And thank you. I'm gonna yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Valentina. Next.
Ali Mejia. Ali.
Hello, is this me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Alondra Mejia, and I would absolutely love to see the Porter Building go to the Pajarone Valley Arts. Arts is something that is so huge and so major for a lot of individuals across the cultures. And the current, you know, I live right in front of the, the center where it is now on Sutton Street, and it's so small. And I've been there a few times growing up. My sister and I, we had our project shown there for the Day of the Dead and, and different other events. And, yeah, I mean, realistically speaking, I feel like so much of the community would love to see an art space, and the fact that there is conversation about individual artists having their own studios, I feel like that's so great. And I'm all in favor for that, and I one-hundred percent support it, and I would absolutely love to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. Next.
Adriana Torres.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So, um, I agree with what everybody's saying, like, we don't need another fancy, we don't need a fancy hotel in Watsonville, because if it were to happen, it'll, I'll, I give it like a year, and then it's just gonna go down the hill. But that's not the point. The point is like, they didn't take in consideration all the other restaurants that are here of like families that have been around for like thirty-plus years. And, um, like, we have an Italian restaurant. There's Ella by the, uh, by the airport. Like, they have Italian food. You know what I mean? There's great places downtown. And adding that PVA to downtown is such a great thing, because we need more artists in Watsonville. Or we need to keep what artists from Watsonville in Watsonville. They shouldn't be leaving to show their art somewhere else. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Adriana. Next.
Kathleen, go ahead.
Hello, this is Kathleen Crochetti. I don't believe the Pajaronean proposal would be as good for downtown Watsonville as a vibrant cultural center. First, the media center already exists at the digital nest. We have wonderful farm-to-table restaurants in the Green Valley Grill, and Ella's at the airport. We had a destination restaurant called Lorenzini's, but it folded. PVA won't need parking, as the city parking garage looks to be at ten percent capacity every day. In the first hour of this meeting, I heard many comments from both the community and the city council about investing resources of our town, in particular with youth. PVA will be offering classes and activities for youth of all ages. The arts are an economic driver that PVA is bringing to the town to interact with our rich cultural offerings. The people who come to town to participate in PVA activities will then spend their discretionary, discretionary dollars in restaurants that already exist here. Towns that invest in their cultural resources are investing in their future growth for all tourism sectors. I have a brand-new nonprofit with a small board. We have raised one-point-five million dollars for Watsonville Brillante, because it was an audacious idea backed by a strong reputation and a track record. If I can do it, PVA can do it.
Kathleen.
Not made of money, they're made of heart.
Would you final sentence, Kathleen? Your time's up.
The arts are the heart of our community. I implore you to invest in the heart of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, next.
Jessica, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, Jessica?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jessica Carrasco, and I just wanted to say that you have the opportunity to diversify and increase the options of things to do here in Watsonville. I have heard too many times that there is nothing to do in Watsonville, and that there's nothing for the youth. By ju, by choosing PV Arts to purchase the Porter Building, you would bring in art classes for youth, support their skills, keep them off the streets, and help them evolve as artists at a young age. The Porter Building would also provide spaces for local artists like myself who want to create more, display my art, go to events that showcase dance performances and films like the Watsonville Film Festival, and I would love to see my daughter take art classes here in Watsonville and, and not in Santa Cruz. I just want to also say that the art heals and motivates, it speaks, it adds more volume, value to the cities, and adds economic opportunity for many, but even more importantly, it adds value to lives. So please keep that in mind when you're making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next.
Judy, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Judy Gettleson. Can you hear me?
Yes, Judy.
And I am a big fan of the Pajarone Valley Arts Associate, or Arts Community, and I wrote a letter endorsing them, and I'm an artist, and I've gotten grants from them, and I've given them money, and I hope they continue. And I think we are blessed with two remarkable opportunities. And I want us to look at which opportunity will lift all boats. And I don't think this is a, a comment on gentrification. I think it's an opportunity to take someone who is world-class, who is also local. The Pajaronean is not only a local institution, they are bringing in writers, and they have remarkable assets that they could make this happen rather quickly, and they would help lift the Pajarone Valley Arts Association. So my vote after supporting the Pajarone Valley Arts would move to the Pajaronean, and I think we should support their quest. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next.
Beth, go ahead.
Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Yes, Beth.
Okay. My name is Beth Shields. I've been on the Board of Directors of the PVA for six or seven years. I wrote a letter already, so I won't reiterate what I said. I want to speak to the artist studios. I presently rent warehouse space at the Aptos Warehouse Complex. I've had it for about fifteen years, and I rent it out to other artists, so I have experience in this area. And I also have a gallery at the Tannery where I rent space. So I, I understand this market of renting space to artists. I toured the building when we first started looking at it. The upstairs space is divided already into perfect art-studio-sized spaces. I've only got nineteen seconds. Beautiful windows. The space, in my opinion, would go for more than a dollar a square foot. It, it's so perfect. So I just wanted to say that there's a definite potential for monthly income and to support the local artists in Watsonville. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Tony, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Tony.
Hi, this is Tony Nunez, the managing-
Hi, uh, this is Tony Nunez, the Managing Editor at the Pajaronian Newspaper. Obviously, I normally do not speak at these meetings, but these are very different circumstances. First off, I'd like to say I have very little time, but I'd like to say that both proposals are really great proposals and really great projects for this community. Um, I think all of us know how mu- how important our downtown is to sparking. Especially that corner of downtown to spark in a revitalization of downtown. Uh, but I think that our proposal fits that property better, uh, the PV Arts proposal. And I really hope that if we end up getting the uh, building that PV Arts works with Mr. Henry Garcia. Across the street at the Fox Theater, and we could be neighbors sometime in the future. Just very quickly, um, I know he'll only have ten seconds, but um, to expand on what our CEO said, Dan Polcorno. I'm working with Brad Kava over at Cabrillo College, the community college.
Tony, I miss out, so can you give the last sentence?
Yes, I'm working with Brad Kava over at Cabrillo College. He runs the Journalism Department. They had to cancel classes this semester because of low enrollment. And what we're trying to do is rebuild the program by um, creating a feeder system with the PV USD. Sparking back up Cat's Tales, the high school newspaper there at Watsonville High School, and starting newspapers at Pajaro Valley and Aptos. So that's the project that we, he was talking about. Thank you so much.
Okay, Tony, thank you. Uh, next.
Gabriel, go ahead.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, Gabriel.
Alright, thank you. Well, um, first and foremost, I'm in support of the PVA Arts Gallery. And I think um, we need to support this as a community, because for far too long, we haven't given the arts a chance. And this is your opportunity to give us a building, give us a chance to bring arts to the community. You know, our best asset is our people, our culture, and our talent. And I think if we have a creative hub to do that, we could do really big things here in Watsonville. A lot of the time, we're going after big money. Dan and Joe, um, I appreciate you guys coming on and making this pitch, but this is not what the community needs at this time. We need space, and we've been needing it for the past twenty years. So what I recommend is that we build something that is reflective of the community, not something that somebody wants our community to become. Um, Paco, to answer your question, I would love for your father to come to the PV Arts Gallery, because I know he would love it. Um, I don't want to speak on your behalf, because as a person of color, I do not appreciate it when white men do that. Um, and also, this is a gentrifier, and I think we need to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Next.
Sitali, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sitali, um, a local millennial from Watsonville. Um, I am here in the, um, I'm a full supporter of PV Arts. Um, getting this building. I think it would be working with youth. Um, I just know how beneficial beneficial it would be. Um, for our community to have a a beautiful space like this. I do, um, it's unfortunate I only have a minute, but I do want to highlight some of the language. That was used in um, the other bitter. Um, we heard words like strategic catalyst, economic generator. Market Watsonville cultured international player. Um, we are going to make Watsonville a great place. We are going to put Watsonville on the map. These are all words that are red flags for gentrification. Okay, we need to be very careful about the types of businesses we allow into our town, and we need to prioritize. Um, community, um, places like PV Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sitali. Um, next.
Vanessa, go ahead.
Alright, um, good evening. My name is Vanessa Kuros Carter, and I am running for currently running for City Council in District Two. Um, I listened to both project proposals. The first project proposal by the Pajaronian raised some red flags. Um, while I do appreciate that proposal, I I did find some things concerning the lack of community input. Um, low-scale, low-paying jobs, um, some gentrification concerns, lack of benefit for the community. Um, so those were some things that were of deep concern to me. Um, in contrast, PVA um, seems to be investing back into the community. They really seem to be pushing for education, empathy, and empowerment, which are things that I fully believe in, that I fully want to back. So I want to give my support to PVA. Um, they ask for community input. They have community involvement. Um, they have space for community. They're really investing in helping our community grow and thrive and learn. And so I would really like to um, see them acquire that space. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next.
Jim, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garcia and council members for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Brown, and I'm Executive Director of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County. I'm speaking today on behalf of Pajaro Valley Arts Proposal. Despite Santa Cruz County being considered a heaven for the arts, our entire county suffers from a lack of arts and cultural facilities. From the nineteen ninety-nine Santa Cruz County Cultural Action Plan, I quote, twenty years ago, the nineteen seventy-nine Santa Cruz County Cultural Plan. Offered as a key recommendation, the need for substantive additional art facilities. But the issues that have undermined efforts to construct arts facilities are complex and political, close quote. More than twenty years after this report, the number-one need expressed by Watsonville artists and arts organization remains the needs per space. Classrooms, galleries, dance studios, and other performance spaces. You have an amazing opportunity right now to remove the complex and political barriers. And help create some of the art space that this community has been aching for for over thirty years. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Uh, moving on.
Guillermo, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Guillermo Aranda. I'm a local artist, muralist, uh, and I'm in favor of an art center. And I feel that it's something that is desperately needed and long overdue, especially when it focuses on young, on youth. And I, I feel very, very fortunate to uh, be meeting a lot of young artists that are very fantastic and. Uh, I believe that our youth are very, very gifted and talented if they're given the opportunity, and I thank you.
Thank you, Guillermo.
Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, um, yes, this is an interesting situation. Um, I'm a great fan of the Pajaronian, and Tony, I know you need a much better facility. And you definitely need a capacity to develop young interns to go into journalism. As the newspaper, our local newspaper has been shrinking for years. I'm just not sure that this is the project with a boutique hotel. And an Italian restaurant, but I would like the city to help the Pajaronian find such a place downtown. I completely support the Pajaro Valley of uh, Arts Council in their idea, because this county. Is known for its artists. That's why we have an October, well, we used to have it, October Open Artist Studio. And Watsonville is always been lacking artist space. And I proposed this two years ago when I ran for City Council, remember Ari? Nobody said anything. Well, the time has come. Let's do it.
Thank you, Steve. Next.
Yes, Sonia, go ahead.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone here, especially to the community out there. Um, yeah, I completely agree with several folks that mentioned it, that, you know, they just scream gentrification. Like, it's too white men presenting, trying to sell us on it, you know, like, really, like, oh, we're gonna bring all of this investment, all this money, just, just a lot of. I just really felt like they were trying to sell us on stuff, you know, and and really sell us on the new image of Watsonville. Um, when, when the Watsonville that we have right now is great and amazing, and we are awesome. Um, so I don't, I don't necessarily need a new Watsonville. I completely support PVA having this building, because we need more arts in Watsonville. We need to really help all of the artists that are out there. I grew up dancing, and, you know, I still help out in the youth groups, and that's a struggle. We never, we're always moving around, bouncing from different dance studio to different dance studio, and can, and hardly any of them allow us to wear our dance shoes. Um, so definitely, we need a space for arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Yesenia. Next.
Christina, go ahead. Christina? Rosemarie, do you want to speak? Oh, okay, Christina, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Christina Cuevas. I've been acquainted with PVA for the past twenty years. And during that time, I've seen PVA's efforts to advance its mission of bringing the community together to the arts. I have four specific reasons why I encourage you to seriously consider approving PVA's bid. First, PVA consistently provides programs that's that are accessible to a broad spectrum of audiences within. And outside of the gallery with public art space. Second, it provide, it it understands the importance of engaging school-aged children in art education to boost their appreciation. Of art, spark their interest in developing their own artistic talents, and advancing their academic achievement. Third, PVA actively collaborates with public agencies and nonprofit organizations to engage community members in an artistic expression. Both in Watsonville and beyond the city limits. And finally, PVA has actively pursued organizational development strategies to boost its uh, relationships. Its effectiveness and the sustainability, and is ready to mount this exciting project. It regularly seeks training.
Time is up, Christina, so thank you.
Okay, let me do one last. I think that um, this is a viable and vibrant art venue that would. Include space for artists to create and sell their work, room for community groups to host events, and just boost our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, next.
Rosemary, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Rosie Penhallow. I'm a local artist and also active on the gallery committee at the at PVA. Gallery, and I just want to say that it's the the quality of the exhibits there are unmatched in what's in the county. And it it has become so, um, it's such a tiny little space for have such a big draw. It really does have a. Huge reputation and a very big draw, and I don't think there'll be any problems uh, filling that new building with interested and active. People. And the other thing Judy didn't mention, um, as treasurer, that she is a. An ex- she has expertise in grant writing. She has procured over and over again grants for the PVA nationally, locally. And statewide, so um, that's just a little plug also for the capability of continuing to bring more money in.
Thank you, Rosemarie. Thank you.
Myra, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Myra Rizvaltierra. I'm a local artist and dancer from White Hawk Astic Dancing Group. Um, I'm in favor of the Pajaro Valley Arts Center. Um, I think, like a lot of people said in our community, we just need a chance. To show what we got, you know, like, we just want a place where we can practice our art. Um, me personally, I just rent a little room. I don't have the space to work on my art like I would like to, and having this kind of space. Um, for not only myself, but a lot of other local artists that I know would be really amazing. And like I said, and a lot of people said, um, I think it's what the community wants. We just need a, a space where we can all gather together. And create beautiful artwork. And um, yeah, with that, I I give the rest of my time to whoever else needs it.
Thank you, Myra.
Francis, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, Francis.
Alright, um, so hopefully I can cram everything in that I want to. Um, first things first, I will not go to a restaurant that those two people will bring. I feel like they're gentrifiers. I do not like how they said Watsonville needs to be revitalized, or it's not great. Watsonville has a long history of culture, history. I don't understand who they're talking to. I did not like their language. Um, I am in full support of the PV Arts getting the Porter Cent- Center. Just because I feel like it's needed for the youth. The youth itself, they're so creative, and they need an outlet for them to. Take out and express how they feel and what they're going through. Again, I, um, I don't understand why gentrification is not something that we talk about in a general basis. It should be a no-brainer. Profit or the community. It should be the community time and time again. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Is there anybody else?
Victor, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Victor.
Hi, uh, my name is Victor Cervantes. I've been an educator with PV USD.
We lost Victor.
Go ahead, Victor.
Anyways, uh, my background's in the arts and arts education, and I I strongly believe that. Uh, the arts are what create a vibrant communities, and I fully support uh, PV, uh, PV Arts. Uh, to have that space downtown, because it will nurture creativity and create future leaders that will continue to promote. There's a beauty and the talents that Watsonville are already has. You know, we need to make a distinction between uh, the talents that are already there. And and the financial resources that maybe maybe lacking, but there is no lack of talent in Watsonville. That's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor.
Linda, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name's Linda Martin. I'm the Executive Director of Pajaro Valley Arts, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Sally Christine Rogers. She's a local resident, business and property owner, and a generous philanthropist in our community. She intended to speak tonight, but unfortunately, she was unable to attend, because she had to be with a seriously ill family member. She asked me to share the following thoughts with you. How positive during this uncertain time in all of our lives to focus on an opportunity to enliven our downtown. The purchase of the Porter Building will enable the PVA to provide not only first-class gallery and reception space. But will allow for a more comprehensive workshop, classes, and studio space, which will bring a self-sustaining income. And provide the public access to actively working artists. In its new space, the PVA Gallery will be able to expand support of local artists, showcasing original works. As well as bringing in revenue and sales tax. Over the years, Pajaro Valley Arts has worked tirelessly to inspire our community.
Linda, your time is up, so if you could just finish with one.
Sure, please support this exceptional opportunity to further PVA's goal of bringing the community together. And supporting the strategic plan of the city of Watsonville.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Cedric, go ahead.
Hey, everyone. How's it going? Can you hear me?
Yes, Cedric.
Fantastic. Uh, my name is Cedric Cabrera. I am an actor, a writer, and an educator. Uh, I have a very special connection to this particular part of Watsonville, because I grew up on that block. Um, my parents owned My Choice Pizza and Deli Cafe for over ten years in my childhood. And all throughout it, I basically lived in the Fox Theater and across uh, playing in all those areas. I always noticed that there was a huge lack for the arts, and this is a great opportunity for all of you to do it. Uh, by supporting the PVA. Uh, I understand that myself as a writer. I don't need the space of a warehouse to craft a good story, but as a performer, I understand that space is everything. Space to create, space to breathe, space to live, and our art in our community should not be an afterthought like some printed portrait at a Marriott. It should be a centerpiece and a piece for the community to come together.
Thank you, Cedric.
Andrea, go ahead.
Um, hello, my name is Andrea Flores. Um, as a citizen, as a citizen of Watsonville, um, can y'all hear me?
Yes, Andrea.
Yes, okay. So as a citizen of Watsonville, I do support PVA, and Watsonville youth have been neglected for far too long. And frankly, a restaurant boutique uh, will not support them in any way possible. And that project, it has only concepts, no commitments. PVA has continually shown time and time again. That they dedicate themselves for the community. As a youth, you have all disappointed me and my community time and time again. And it's time for y'all to recognize how often our dreams are snuffed out by gentrifiers and folks who are power-hungry. But won't lift a finger to help the community who are in need and is suffering. I give the rest of my time for the next person.
Thank you so much, Andrea. Anyone else?
Go ahead, Ellie.
Okay, I strongly oppose the Pajaronian's bid. What in the privileged gentrifier was that? Oh, my God, to tell our community that we are shooting too low. This is what Watsonville needs. That was embarrassing. That was insulting. You're not even from here. The language that was used, the way that you don't know our city. You're not even from here. The language that was used, the way that you don't know our city, Watsonville has cuisine. We do have a go-to restaurant. We have every, you don't, oh, this is so frustrating. If you had integrity, you would be removing your bid. City, please, I ask you, here is your opportunity to fill the void like Trina said and create a space we desperately need without the funding that we never have. PVA will be funded. Judy, the community will fundraise with you. Thank you for all that you do. The timeline is perfect with COVID. We'll be ready when it's ready, like the Pahreronian is insulting the city and telling us what we need. The way that they spoke to Paco, telling him how he felt was insulting. The whole entire presentation was infuriating. This is not what Watsonville needs. You do not know Watsonville. You're not from here. No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Ellie. Anyone else?
Irene, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Irene. I'm an artist and cultural organizer. I would like to strongly advocate on behalf of PVA and for an art center in Watsonville. I'd like to encourage the city to consider the long-term value of investing in the arts and the power of cultural capital. The city may be enticed by the prospect of tourism dollars, but I believe that that is short-sighted. The political energy, the social health, the economic mobility that can be generated by a dedicated art center should not be underestimated. The center will include pro-social activities for youth, career opportunities for creatives, entertainment and skill-building opportunities for our diverse community. And as an artist, I'm particularly excited about the art studios. Watsonville has such a brilliant community of creatives with such a strong cultural history and deserves a space like this. Thank you.
Thank you Irene. Anyone else?
Claudia, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Surir Rodriguez. Can you guys hear me?
Yes Surir.
Hi, my name is Surir Rodriguez and I have lived in Watsonville my whole entire life. I personally and strongly, emphasis on strongly, believe that Watsonville does not need any more restaurants or let alone hotels. The purity presented would be an amazing project and something that I would want in my community personally. And I'm all here for it. Having this space would bring a lot of opportunities for local artists in town. It will give them a chance to share their art, which would help the artists who are here locally. And I also wanted to mention, I have a personal bond to that building. I went to school there. And to me, it would be such a shame, really a disappointment disappointment to let two white men, gentrifiers if you will, take over and create a boutique out of there or whatever they wanted to make out of it. Because it has so much potential as a hub or space for local artists. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your words. Okay, is there anybody else?
Tracy, go ahead.
My name is Tracy Torres and I strongly back Pahrera Valley Arts to acquire the Porter Building. I am actually an artist and an art teacher in San Benito County and PVA has always opened their arms full-heartedly to welcome me and my students for whatever I need, from resources to field trips, to just a comment, to a helping hand. I really appreciate all that they have done for me, my community, and also for my parents. They are Mexican-American immigrants who more than love to come in and view the art, view the exhibits and I just want to thank Judy and the whole PVA team for for, you know, coming together and pushing towards acquiring the Porter Building. And I am a former student of Guillermo Aranda and I love Juan Fuentes and it's about time, you know, about time we put their artwork all around our city. Thank you.
Thank you Tracy. Anyone else?
Jeannie, go ahead.
Hello, this is Jeannie Johnson, the publisher of the Pahreronian. I just want to say thank you to everyone for your comments. I think that Dan's idea is misconstrued. I don't think that anyone's intent is to gentrify anything. The Pahreronian has been in Watsonville, serving the community for 152 years and that's what we're still planning to do. Our idea is more about creating a centerpiece for business in the downtown area, bringing something new to the community that doesn't already exist. And making a space where we can groom a new generation of writers and helping, you know, local students who are interested in journalism kind of expand their experience and learn from the Pahreronian as it were. So we hope that you will consider our proposal.
Thank you. Thank you Jeannie. Okay, anyone else?
Is that you Paul?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to support the having an art center or an art hub as it was for downtown Watsonville. I believe creating a space or making a space for our youth and our future to, a safe space actually, to help inspire our future, to make the city grow even better and to do better than what we are already doing already. And so I'm fully in support with that. And I think that with the Pahreronian, I think they need to invest in the arts and come in with us and put in an actual piece for journalism. That's another art form. So I know Tony is from Watsonville and that you make a great teacher. So we gotta, we gotta show our youths, we gotta, we gotta show the city how we can collaborate instead of going up against each other. And let's get this art hub rolling. I mean, this has been a dream of not only myself, but of future artists and community members for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you Paul. Anyone else?
Mama, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Monique Sanchez, board member with the Pahrera Valley Arts. I encourage you to allow PVA the opportunity to purchase a space. My husband and I are one of the many artists in the community that struggle with finding a place that we can create, teach, grow, inspire, learn, and connect with other diverse cultures within our community. It's time to listen to the community. We need an art space that we can call home. Thank you.
Thank you Monique. Anyone else?
That was the last hand that was at Mayor.
All right. I just want to remind everybody what the next steps are. Is because this is going to be property sales. It's going to be a closed session discussion. And so on November 10th at our closed session, the council will determine which of the two to begin negotiations with. And hopefully the negotiations will be successful and if they're not, then we'll have negotiation with a second applicant. So that's where we're going to be going next. So with that, that concludes. Oh yes.
Just inform them also that they have the right to speak prior to closed session.
Well, yeah, definitely. Whenever we have closed sessions, we immediately, I immediately ask if there's anybody in the community that wants to address any issues, any items on closed session. So thank you for pointing that out, Aldeanio. So with that, yes. Trina?
Yes, as we've been hearing this, I have posted it. It would be nice if the city has a forum location for other comments and maybe the materials between the two projects so that we can still continue to hear from the community, those that may not have been able to participate today.
Thank you for recommending that Trina. Yeah. Is there any final, other final comments, questions? If not, we'll move on to our next item. And our next item is a report on safe and sane fireworks for 2020. And it's being requested by Chief Honda and Chief Lopez. So I'm not sure both are going to be giving the staff report. You're on.
Just one more, Mayor. And they're entering the room.
Oh, okay.
And just one second while Tamara transitions folks out of the room and brings in Chief Honda and Chief Lopez.
Okay.
And thank you to Dan and Judy for the presentation. Okay, you're both in the room, so go ahead. Judy, make sure you unmute your mic when you're ready.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. Our Chief Rudy Lopez presenting a report on fireworks as requested. Excuse me. It is well known that fireworks have presented an increasing challenge to our community and city resources over the years, particularly the use of illegal fireworks known as dangerous fireworks. The purpose of this report is to provide factual information as it relates to the sale of safe and sane fireworks and the enforcement efforts related to both safe and sane and dangerous fireworks. I'll begin with this presentation with a little bit of background. In 1984, permits were issued for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. The permit allowed the sale of the fireworks within the city limits from July 1st to July 4th and within the hours of 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM or sorry here, my slide's not showing up right on my screen. Here, please bear with me. I've got two screens operating, so please bear with me. There we go. My apologies. The permissible use of safe and sane fireworks within the city was, is during the same time, July 1st to the 4th as well. In 2009, a surcharge was established to cover the costs associated with advertising, enforcement, fire suppression, and the cleanup of fireworks following the 4th of July. Permits were limited to 25 vendors, the vendors being local nonprofit organizations. TNT and Phantom, the two firework distributors, were to provide signage addressing the safety laws and and fines related to the sale of fireworks at each booth location. The distributors were also required to hold an orientation meeting with all firework booth vendors to include our fire marshal prior to sale of any fireworks. Each year, our community development department issues the firework permits to the nonprofit organizations. Community development also receives the permit and surcharge fees. The surcharge fees are received after the firework sales are calculated, which vary from year to year. Community development issues up to 25 permits annually for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. The permits fee includes two hours fireworks booth inspection fee. Community development then provides our fire department the permit information such as booth location and contact information in order for us to arrange the booth fire inspections. As mentioned, up to 25 permits could be issued annually. However, in 2020, there were 17 permits issued. In 2018 and 1922 permits were issued and in 2017, 24 permits were issued. This slide also shows the total annual revenues generated from the firework permits for each given year. Our field service division of Public Works assists with the posting and removal of signs near locations entering and leaving the city limits. The signs address the use of fireworks outside of the city limits, which is zero. Additionally, Solid Waste conducts street sweeping operations after the 4th and our Parks and Community Service Department utilizes a team of workers that clean up various city park locations as well. Our three-staff fire units under the direction of the battalion chief will inspect the firework booths prior to any sale of the fireworks, which is typically done throughout the day on June 30th. The inspection includes some of the following. Ensure that there is posted a posted permit, examination of the state fire marshal's proof fireworks, presence of appropriate type extinguishers with current service tags, proof of insurance, and ensure that the required signage is posted as well. All three fire units and the battalion chief participate in fireworks patrols each night beginning July 1st through the 4th from the hours of 6:00 to 10:00 to 10:00 PM or longer if needed. One fire department member is hired back each night to patrol with and support the battalion chief. Our fire marshal conducts hearings as required. An example of this would be if a person that was issued a citation requests that the fine be waived or reduced due to financial impact or believe they were wrongly charged. Then a hearing would be scheduled for that person. Appeals have 21 days from the date of the citation was issued to request a hearing. All hearings are held within two months of appeals. Our police department issues all citations related to the use and/or possession of dangerous fireworks and also for the unsafe use of safe and sane fireworks in accordance with the Watsonville Municipal Code Please note that the violation fee is the maximum amount allowed under Section 12700B of the Health and Safety Code. Most violations are for the use of or possession of dangerous fireworks. In 2020, our department responded to 13 total fire calls, most of which were vegetation fires. However, only four of those calls could be directly attributed to fireworks. In 2019, our department responded to 15 total fire calls. And only four of those calls were confirmed to be fireworks-related. And in 2018, our department responded to four calls, three of which were confirmed as fireworks or fireworks were disposed of incorrectly. The three years of service I just mentioned were from July 1st to July 4th of that year. Our fire department overtime costs for fiscal year 2020, 2021 was $1,585. Our last slide shows the total number of calls for service related to fireworks from July 1st to the 4th and the amount of citations issued for that given year by a police department. In addition to calls specific to fireworks, the police department averaged 1,000 to 1,400 calls for other service leading up to the 4th of July. And something that is worthy of noting is that 302 hours of overtime costs in the amount of $23,714 that was incurred by the police department related to fireworks for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. I'm sorry to blow through that so quickly, but I know it's late. But I want to thank you and this pretty much concludes my presentation on fireworks.
Okay, so now it's time for clarifying questions and we'll start with Felipe. Are you there Felipe? Not hearing from Felipe, I'll move on to Lowell.
Thank you very much Mayor. I wanted to ask how many citations were issued? And how many people appealed and what was the what was the rate of appeal or how many, how many people got off scot-free?
So for the year, referring to this year?
Oh, you can go back as far as you can remember.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers for the previous years. But this year, I had, let me pull this up a second here. I apologize. There's a lot of numbers up here.
That's okay. I'll ramble on while you look at the numbers. You know, a lot of people complain about fireworks, but they're not complaining really about the safe and sane fireworks. They're complaining about the illegal fireworks which rattle their teeth in their windows. And so I don't know if there's a relationship between safe and sane and dangerous fireworks. And so I don't know if there's a relationship between safe and sane and dangerous fireworks or not, but the public seems to think that they're rich.
There is a distinct difference between the two. One is legal, at least within the city limits of Watsonville, and the other is illegal throughout the state of California.
And Councilmember Hearst, if I, if I may chime in, I might ask Chief Honda to speak to the number of citations that were issued and how those are typically handled, and the amount of time required to process each of those, because I think that's important information for the council to have as well.
Thank you very much. You know, the, the public thinks that we could fund the entire city operation if we just cited all the illegal guys a thousand bucks, but I know that's not really true either.
Councilmember and Mayor and members of the public. Yeah, so as Rudy went over the slides, we issued 16 citations last year, or this year, I should say, compared to 14 citations the year before, and only seven citations the year before in 2018. So now this year, we actually increased our enforcement. We started two weeks earlier on the weekends. So we had additional officers on the weekend of the 19th and 26th. And just because we need the complaints, we're going to come in even sooner this year, and they did. Although the additional enforcement didn't result in, in many more citations. But we did get 16, which is the most we've done in quite a few years. Now, 16 citations with all the different calls for service may not seem like a lot, but you got to remember that fireworks enforcement is very labor-intensive. And in our city, we get calls from all over the city and all the districts. And so it's very hard to pinpoint who's lighting those fireworks off. So unless we get specific information about an address, we'll respond to the call. And generally, if they're lighting off illegal fireworks and they see a marked unit coming, they'll run in the house before we can even spot them doing it. So we end up having to leave the area and go to the next call. Where we find we are most effective is if we are able to locate the problem area ahead of time, and then we'll go in with unmarked units to, first, we have to observe them doing the illegal fireworks, and then we have to detain them before they run away and run into someone's house to effectively write a citation, and then we have to seize the fireworks, book them into evidence, and write a report. So each, each arrest can take several hours. So with that said, moving forward, what we're going to do is do what we're doing with the noise, noise complaints and music complaints is we're going to start, if we can identify the house that someone ran into, then we'll actually cite the owner of record of that actual house and send it to them in the mail. As far as appeals, we don't really track that. All the appeals go to the fire department. So I don't have those numbers available. I believe that was one of your questions.
Yeah, I do, I do have that, those numbers. Yeah, so for 2020, we had three appeals. In 2019, we had four.
And were those appeals upheld?
Yeah, in 2019, one was of three of them were upheld.
Thank you. That, that answers my questions, but you know, we hear from the public very heavily about this issue, and you know, they're, they're upset that their peace and quiet is disturbed, and they, and they you know, they, they don't always understand the enforcement, the difficulty with enforcement. They think you could just drive by and cite somebody, or that it doesn't take much time to investigate these, and how elusive the perpetrators really are. So I think there's, you know, there's more explanation and, and more information that the public could absorb, and they might have greater understanding. They might not like it anymore, but they might understand the difficulty to a greater degree.
Thank you, Lowell. Felipe is back, so Felipe, you're on. Are you back, Felipe? Okay, I guess not. Trina?
Thank you, Mayor. So it looks like the went up after we did the fireworks at the airport. We did the airport on the 18th, doing that activity or bring that activity back would be beneficial for reducing the number of callouts that we've had. Do you think that there's a relationship there?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kaufman, I didn't hear the first part of your question, and were you addressing that question to myself or to Chief Honda?
Well, probably citations, so let's check in with the chief on this. But overall, we, we had the fireworks at the airport twice, two years in a row, and we had fewer if we were to perhaps conduct the activity there and maybe bring the fundraiser out there and not have the safe and sane, so it's one event, they do it there, all of the nonprofits have to participate if they're going to do any fundraising.
Councilmember Kaufman.
Be something that we could look at or see if that's
Councilmember Kaufman, you're cutting out a bit, but I think I got the gist of your question, and I'll try to take a crack at it. So I believe your question was whether or not we saw an uptick in enforcement as a result of not offering the Fire in the Sky event this year and having an alternative for the community. I think there's a few ways to measure those indicators. One is enforcement, but I think another is that we saw very strong safe and sane fireworks sales at all the booths this year, which I do think was a part of the fact that we weren't able to offer Fire in the Sky, also a part of the fact that folks were not able to perhaps celebrate 4th of July, or attend, or attend regional events in the way that they typically would this time of year because of COVID. And so it is certainly our hope in the future, as soon as we're able to do so. You know, health, health orders aside, to be able to offer the Fire in the Sky event again as a, as an alternative to the use of the safe and sane and the illegal fireworks from that standpoint. Whether or not that would be a move towards a, an outright prohibition of safe and sane fireworks, I think is something that would need to be further explored. And you know, our, our intent for the presentation today was to give you an update like we typically do every year. We have a lot going on, on several fronts, obviously, but if the council was interested in staff exploring options and putting time and energy into that, we could always return back to the council at a later date to share those options with you all if that was a priority. But, but yes, I do think the Fire in the Sky had an influence on it as well as this unique, unique situation we're in right now with the pandemic.
Yeah, I certainly want to make sure when we revisit this, that it's done with plenty of time for the nonprofits in case there are modifications, and this is not something that they have the opportunity to do if the, the safe and sane were not to be continued. So that is a concern that I do have. When the citations have happened, do they overlay to see if we're repeating the same offenders or the same neighborhoods? I mean, you, you've had 169 calls, 116, 138. Can we sort of overlay this to see if maybe we've got the same neighborhoods that are repeat offenders? And then maybe use that a little bit as a better target to, to patrol?
Yeah, I can answer that. So we have tried to map it. Councilmember, the problem is a lot of the calls are regarding a specific general area and not a specific exact location, so the maps are kind of broad, and they're all over the city, so it wasn't that helpful, at least of the map that I looked at the year before.
Okay. And I also brought this up a couple of years as well, is the ability to maybe use some drones. Is that something that could be feasible, or could be pilot something like that, that might be able to help facilitate the patrolling for some of this?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So drones, otherwise known as UAVs or UASs or RPAs, there's a lot of different names for them. But there's a lot of concerns and limitations. So for every drone, we have to have one officer piloting, that officer has to be trained through FAA rules and regulations. And for a city this size, one drone is only going to be able to cover a very small area. So we would have to have numerous drones to be effective. And with each drone, like I said, is numerous officers, and then you also have to have officers that can actually do the enforcement and do the citations. So that's one limitation. The other limitation is so firework enforcement, most of them are infractions, or even some of them are misdemeanors. But there are a lot of concerns of privacy, privacy concerns from different community groups, and just from the community as a whole, about police using drones for that type of enforcement. We don't have any drones currently. The sheriff's office has a drone program, but we have strict rules when we use them as far as they're only used for emergency situations or life-saving situations. I have talked to other cities such as Salinas, and there's a Southern California, I think it's Oxnard, they've been using drones last couple of years. Although it's publicized as an enforcement, they have seen no effective decrease by the usage of drones. So I don't think there's, I haven't seen any reports that actually say drones work at this time, so I don't know if it's worth our investment and time and effort.
Have you evaluated the fines? Do you think that, do you think that there's enough sting in the fine from what other jurisdictions are doing for the $1,000? Because, you know, it, maybe, maybe that's insignificant for some of these folks that do have the fines. I don't know, but have we compared what other cities are doing for the fines and penalties?
I can tell you from the fire department's perspective that the $1,000 is pretty consistent. It is the maximum amount that we can levy on, on people. And it's all predicated on the amount of fireworks that they're, they're caught with. It's once you get into like 25 pounds of weight and more, where the fines are increased to $5,000. And it continues to go up as the amount of the illegal fireworks increasing.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it has to do with the policy from the council for making the changes, I'd like it to be something that could be considered if that is necessary, and that it's and it's relative to what other jurisdictions are doing if we're going to make any policy changes. And since I keep skipping out, my, my computer's getting tired as well. I'll finish my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, moving on to Paco.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Honda, Chief Lopez, for the presentation. Are there, are there any strategies that maybe in other communities across the nation have tried to sort of mitigate the use of illegal fireworks? And is there any role that neighborhoods or communities can have in safely sort of addressing an issue in their own neighborhood? Because I know how tough it is for, to enforce an entire city, I have to do everything you sort of explained, Chief Honda, and I was just wondering.
Yeah, I have talked to other jurisdictions, and they've done very similar things. Like I said, some jurisdictions have tried the unmanned aerial vehicles or drones to little or no effect. But I think we've, we're kind of on par with other jurisdictions. We put out public service announcements. We put out mailers. We try to discourage the use of illegal fireworks. We use, as far as enforcement, we've been trying to do as much variations as we can using unmarked vehicles, even consider bicycles to help, you know, apprehend some of the big offenders, although bicycles have their limitations too. So I'm sorry, I forgot the second part of your question.
Is there a role for, for neighborhoods, or neighborhood associations, or, you know, you know, is there, is there an opportunity for neighbor, neighbors to come together, talk, and you know, I don't want to put anybody at risk, or I don't want anybody to confront anybody, but you know.
So one of the, one of the biggest issues we have is we'll get calls, and they don't want to, or they can't give us a specific address. They just hear the illegal fireworks. They see the, the big explosions in the sky. If neighborhoods could get together and actually discuss it on, you know, nextdoor.com or whatever, and discourage people from using their illegal fireworks, that's very helpful. And then when people call in, if they can get us closer to a specific address, or you know, vehicle that's involved, or any kind of descriptions that help us pinpoint it, that's very helpful for us too. And that actually helps us be able to do a successful prosecution.
Thank you, Chief. And then I don't know if maybe Chief Lopez or City Manager can answer this one, but do we have a sense of how much litter we pick up the day after 4th of July? Or how much smoke is, you know, just sort of thrown up in the air? And, you know, there are a lot of people with underlying conditions, asthma and stuff like that. And can't imagine too much smoke, just like the fires, or is a good thing for the community?
Well, all I can say is that, just speaking with the, the parks, parks and Public Works, there's, there's a significant amount of cleanup that's, that's involved following the 4th of July, for sure. And, and, and as far as whether those, those cleanups are a result of the illegal or safe and sane, I couldn't answer to that.
And then the second part of that question, Councilmember Estrada, you know, we don't really have any good metrics or indicators in terms of what impact it has on the air quality, other than just anecdotal. But I'm sure that around the 4th of July, it certainly has an impact overall in the area.
And just sort of my last question before I move on, or let somebody else have questions is, have we ever attempted to bring the nonprofits together to think of alternatives? I, you know, again, working for a nonprofit, I understand the importance of fundraising. And, you know, if you have something that works, it's hard to sort of say, let's do something else. I completely understand that, that point, but has there ever been an attempt to sort of just figure something else out? You know, the, I think I might have mentioned to the city manager one day that the fair, they had the drive-through food, you know, and it seemed to be a huge success. People went to go buy corn dogs, and, you know, just because I think I had a newborn at that time. I, you know, if I hadn't, I would have gone for the jumbo corn dogs, you know. And, you know, is there, is there a possibility to do something like that? Is there, have we studied anything? Have we looked at anything? Just sort of my, my question about that.
So I'll take a crack at that one, Councilmember Estrada. As the council knows, and I'm sure the community that's watching knows, the debate around safe and sane fireworks in Watsonville is not a new one. And certainly the nonprofits that are, that are part of the permitted sales certainly rely on the proceeds of those sales to support their operations. We have done surveys over the years to collect input from the nonprofit partners around how the current framework is working for them and the current model, and many of those surveys come back very favorable. I don't think as part of those discussions, we've approached those groups with alternatives if safe and sane fireworks were to be prohibited. But obviously, at the end of the day, it's a classic policy decision for the council to make as to whether or not the council as a, as a whole was interested in wanting to make a change to that current model. And if there is interest, interest in that, we would certainly be engaging those groups and wanting to, wanting to have some conversations around what impacts that may, that may have on them, and how those could be mitigated if there was a change in the, in the current regulations.
I appreciate that answer, Mr. City Manager. You know, I understand the balance of peace of mind, as I think Councilman Hearst had mentioned, and, you know, helping our nonprofits and celebrating you know, our shared identity, a national identity. So it's, it's a lot to sort of think about, and I appreciate that we're having this conversation, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you. I yield my time, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. The cost
The cost, cost overrun for overtime comparisons to amount of infractions, it seems like we're spending more to try to enforce illegal fireworks than what we're recouping from them. So it doesn't make sense to me to continue to put money into overtime when it's going to be ineffective. And, and so I think that's just a waste of funding personally. And I think we need to be able to reuse those resources in a different fashion. And as far as the safe and sane fireworks, you know, Paco brought up an idea of food vendors, I think that's a horrible idea actually, because he objected to drive-throughs. And he's recommending a drive-through food services for nonprofits. So I mean, that's kind of productive of what we're trying to do, right? We're going to have smog for cars or smog from fireworks, but we're going to have smog. And, and that's not good. And then again, what kind of food? It's a fast food, unhealthy food. And so it's a hard decision. It's a no-win-win situation, I think, is not to mean to be on popcorn on that one. But just to show the comparisons, you know, we're trying to do something different. But yet, if you look at it, we may be doing more harm than good in the long run. But as far as the overtime, can, can either the chief or the Mr. Lopez or Fire Chief?
I can answer some part of that. So I know, so when we have the nonprofit selling the fireworks, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but we do get a surcharge from the sales of those fireworks and those sales actually offset most of our overtime costs. In addition to not only the citations that we issue.
If I can just interject, so the 7% surcharge for this year, it's, it's almost a break even with the overtime costs that the police department incurred. I don't have the specific number. I think Finance may be able to provide that for us or CDD. But I, last time we checked, it was, it was nearly a break even.
So that's a, and, and what Chief Lopez is, is describing is a 7% surcharge on gross receipts, gross sales in each of the, at each of the booths. So that does largely help offset the overtime. I also wanted to just share that this year was a little.
Is that covered for both of them? That, that surcharge covers for the police and the fires over time?
Correct, correct. But I wanted to also share that this year was unique. We were in the middle of a pandemic. We expected that firework, particularly illegal firework use was going to start earlier than usual. And I think what we all experienced was that's what happened. And so I did direct both our, our police and fire departments to put some additional time into that as, as Chief Honda had mentioned earlier, and to starting enforcement a little earlier, trying to get ahead of it this year. And, you know, frankly, we just struggled to be able to, to do that in a way where we could catch these individuals in the act, just like Chief Honda was mentioning. But that did result in some additional overtime this year compared to past years. And we will probably modify the way we do that in the future based on what we learned this year.
Yeah, you know, I understand the difficulty of trying to find the fireworks. It's like the same thing, they're trying to find a loud music party. The police always has a hard problem finding the location. Because either when they get there, the music's either been lowered down or they're not doing the fireworks. So it's equivalent to the same thing as them not being able to find that location. And then the neighbor's not being really want to be responsive and saying, that's my neighbor that's doing the fireworks or the neighbor is actually the one who has the party. But, but I do have concerns on that. Because, I mean, we've, we've put out all these resources and, and, I mean, we're really not doing much. People I know complain about the safe and sane fireworks at the same time. But eliminating them isn't going to improve any conditions because the illegal fireworks are still going to be being done. And, and the police force nor the fire department has capacity to be able to, to stop them. You know, they may get a small percentage of them. And I would ask the Chief of Police, I mean, if you had to put a percentage of the amount of fire, illegal fireworks that are put out in the city of Watsonville, what is the percentage that you say you'd catch out of all of that? So.
Oh, that would be a complete guess. But, I mean, we, we probably catch a very small percentage of all the illegal fireworks going off. Just to be honest with you, so I couldn't even put a number on it, but it's a pretty small percentage, I would say.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Ari.
Well, most of the questions have been asked, has been very interesting. I, I live in, in an area of Watsonville where, I think you guys know, there's a lot of upsetness over the fireworks. People, and so I've heard some great things tonight. I don't know if there is an answer. I, I heard what Councilman Gonzalez just said, and it's reasonable as well. You know, people are angry at these huge illegal fireworks. And then that makes the, the safe and sane ones look evil as well to their perspective. And, and the problem is, I don't know, I, I do think that if we had one place, I'm going to go back to what Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez said, we had one place like we did over at the airport where we could offer that kind of opportunity to everyone. I, I think there was a lot less fireworks. This year was horrendous. I mean, it was the most. And you guys were out early. I know you were all over Watsonville. But it comes down to what other council members have said. If you're not willing to turn in your neighbor, because you know they're, they're shooting off fireworks and people can't get there in time, then, then it's really hard. It's really hard to follow through with this. So I, I appreciate the information. And I, I appreciate the information, but I do think we need to try other avenues of focus for 4th of July that might be helpful then. Because everybody might go to those places. But this may just be a COVID year where people had nothing else to do and it just made it much more difficult. But I, I just know it's super distressing to the folks in my area and, and for their pets as well as for themselves. So I thank you for your diligence, Chief Honda and Chief Lopez, you know, for responding to the ones you can and then, and keeping everybody safe at the same time. So thank you very much.
Okay, Felipe, are you back?
Okay, I'm back. So at 11:30, we'll run 12. I'll keep my comments short. You know, I sat on the social committee, Social Services Committee for almost nine years. And, you know, it's difficult to keep up with that demand for the nonprofits, for the city, you know, for the funding. And, you know, all the nonprofits, you know, they have a demand for, for some funding, even a little bit of funding from the city. And, you know, it's, and it's growing. And, you know, for the next couple of years, I think that it's going to be even more difficult for charities and, 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 you know, for funds. And it's going to be more difficult for nonprofits to get charity donate, charitable donations, for foundations to give money for nonprofits. And, you know, I go, I try to go and support the Watsonville wrestling team every once in a while and buy fireworks. And then I donate them because I don't, I'm not into that, you know? And, but I donate them to the kids around. And, you know, they tell me they make $9,000 sometimes on the sales of the fireworks. And, you know, sitting on the Social Services Committee, there's no way that we can give $9,000 every year to every group, you know? And so, you know, I don't know if we can create an alternative for the city, you know, and add more to our social services demand. You know, it's, it's, how many groups is it? 16 or 20 groups? In, in the fireworks groups? So I don't know, you know, it's a putting a huge, you know, burden on our social services program. And some of those folks, you know, they don't, they can't provide a level of funding the, the way that we're asking them to because they're Little League teams, football teams, wrestling teams. They can't, you know, show some money the way that we're asking some of the nonprofits to do. So I just, you know, some thoughts that I had.
Thank you for sharing, Felipe. And this time, we're going to open up to the public for public comments. And so if you want to address the council on this issue of sane and safe fireworks, please raise your hand. Anybody raising their hand?
I don't see any public comment at this time, Mayor.
Okay, okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Now, this was for information to us. But if there's a council member that would like to take it further, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I, I propose that we do bring this back with the discussion of an alternative because we do have to find a balance between the nonprofits and an alternative to them if there's more peer pressure to not have fireworks. Because obviously, we have some people that don't want all of the, the chemicals and the noise. But to give up the nonprofit side of things, we need to have something that's going to be amicable for what that loss would be to those organizations. So, and in plenty of time, so that there's some.
Do you want to make that into a motion then?
I also move that it's brought back to council with the discussion of the nonprofits and alternatives.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, Ari, second the motion. In terms of discussion, is there any discussion on this motion? Lowell?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we have had this discussion and it was a long time ago where the, where, where we had to, it was on our agenda and the nonprofits came in force and all 25 or plus of them said, hey, don't take away our fireworks. And, and that was pretty clear that they needed fireworks for their, their funding. And the council didn't want to take away the fireworks at the time. And I think it was, it was pretty unanimous. What, what is not clear is the, where do these illegal fireworks, these dangerous fireworks come from? And is there some way to have the state fire marshal do more interdiction or discovery about how they get imported or brought into the state? And, you know, I think about the agricultural inspections that go on at our state border and, and how sometimes you got to tell them where the origins came from or the pineapples or whatever. And, and there are, there are some kind of inspection. So where's the state fire marshal's role in, in this? And that ought to be part of the discussion as well. But I don't want to waste a lot of staff time on this because I don't think it's going to fly with the populace one way or another. Just a lot of upsetness about how dogs and pets get disturbed and people's teeth are rattled and the upsetness that, that folks feel. But yet the nonprofits, they, they may be pretty upset if they weren't able to sell fireworks.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? Ari and then Trina.
Yeah, I don't think that was the purpose of it. I think the purpose was trying to find alternative ways that they could make that same kind of money that would be still celebratory and positive. So I don't think it's about denial of safe and sane, at least in my point of view. I think it's about a discussion of what could we offer instead that would still provide that support? And at the same time, celebrate and maybe get all those other, the legal fireworks off the streets. And, but I applaud your thought, Councilman Hurst, about the state interceding in some fashion with the illegal fireworks. Because I think it's a bigger, bigger problem than just our city. Yeah.
Okay, Trina?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with all of the thought here. It's, we just can't pull a plug without having something out there and having this discussion. Because you're going to have every single little soccer kid with their, their cleat song come to council to say that we need this particular fundraiser. And to pit the, the little soccer player against, you know, the seniors that have a dog in their hand because the dog is, you know, scared of the fireworks. There's, we somehow have to find some way that we can balance it out to offset the, the means of what this is creating, the kind of divide it's creating in this community. I also think that the discussion about fires, especially since we've had that significant fire in this county, will, will also bring back up again the, the issue of should we have them when we've had fire risks and the kinds of experiences last fire did in the devastation in this county? So we are going to have fire come back again and use this as, as a reason why we shouldn't be doing fireworks. So we should have the conversation about what is it to be safe? What can we do about the fire marshal situation or the state for the mandates and be able to help with the nonprofits? And what alternatives there may be out there for them? Because this is a four-day event for them to have to man a booth for their fundraising efforts. And I know that that's getting trimmed back. So it's just a matter of having further discussion. I'm not deciding one way or the other. But it, we, we can't have the decision without having the discussion with the advocates on both ends of this, the, the impact in, on both sides.
Felipe?
You know, City Manager, how many, how many organizations is there that have booths?
I believe it's approximately 25.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that we're in a position to be giving $250,000 out, you know, just like that. And I don't know, you know, it's just, I mean, and then we're still going to have the illegal fireworks and the demand for overtime for the fire and police is still going to be there. And the offset is not going to be there. And that offset is going to come from the general fund, from our general fund, not the offset from Phantom and TMT. So that's what I'm saying, I'm trying to say, trying to be fiscally responsible. And that's what, you know, that's what I'm trying to allude to, you know, sitting on that Social Services Committee. You know, we get that demand for more money. How are we going to put 25 more services on there? It's a squeeze when we get one more.
Yeah, we're certainly, we're certainly in a period of significant financial uncertainty for, for obvious reasons. We don't know what the next three months or six months or next year, frankly, are going to look like from a financial standpoint. So I think it, the responsible thing, the financially prudent thing at this point to say would be, whatever options we bring forward, we'll have trade-offs. And it would be the general fund that would have to foot the bill for even mitigating a portion of the funding, even if it wasn't 100%, but just a portion of the funding would need to come from the general fund, which would mean that we would be reducing funding somewhere else. Because that's just the position we're in. But like many of the decisions the council make, makes, there's always trade-offs. And this is another good example of a policy decision that will have some financial impacts down the road.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? Paco?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, many good points have been brought up. And, you know, I, I, I want to hear from our nonprofit partners. You know, I want to hear what their challenges are, you know, why they depend so much on the funding, you know, how much they get. And I think Trina's, you know, Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez is right that maybe together we can develop stuff. And if we can't, just if we can't find a solution, you know, I'm not, you know, advocating to ban anything at this point. I just would like to have the conversation with all our partners. And, you know, just to sort of respond to, to my colleague, Councilman Gonzalez, you know, I'm not advocating for drive-throughs and I'm not advocating for fast food. So it was just an example of how, you know, people, organizations adapt, you know, and think outside of the boxes. There's nothing wrong with thinking outside of the box. There's, there's nothing wrong with bringing up the possibility of new ways of doing things. That's just it, you know? Some organizations like the Health Trust, I, I will say, we're privileged enough that we can go virtual. Not everyone can go virtual. I think Councilman Amanda mentioned that, that, you know, there's soccer teams and stuff like that that depend on, on the funding here. But, you know, we have a very creative community. We have very smart people in our community. We have very talented people in our community. And sometimes I sort of feel like we're, we don't tap into that, you know? And so if, at the end of the day, as. we don't tap into that, you know, and so if, at the end of the day, as Councilman Hurst says, there is no real path forward, then we'll, we'll figure something out, or we'll sort of just have to tolerate the noise complaints and the, the complaints we get from our constituents.
Okay, any further questions or comments on this motion? Aurelio?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Respectfully, City Councilman Paco, I do respect your inputs. But, you know, the thing is, that, that we did, we have conversed, a good conversation here, but again, it's a difficult task because of this, because we're taking Fourth of July. Okay, and, and the nonprofits, for them, if you look at it in their point of view, the easiest way to staff, this is something that's the easiest way to, to staff, the sales, even Little League as it is, has challenges to staff their booths for, for those four days of sales. And, and I can't imagine them trying to do a hot dog sale for four days in a row, you know, and, and staff that and refrigerate it and, you know, hauling in and hauling out materials and, and the house code and everything else that would have to be advised by at the same time. So, you know, looking at our options, it's kind of, they're really limited in a sense for the Fourth of July. I mean, we really had to be really inventive and really outside the box kind of a deal. I mean, I know the Monty Foundation has the, their fireworks at Seacliff, they charge folks to go in there, and they have nonprofits selling food. But again, that's only a one-day event, and so they're setting up and taking down. And, and these nonprofits do it within a four-day window, and they're, you know, they're generating for each one $9,000 or plus money. And so Felipe points out, how do we replace that? Because if you take it away, that them selling the food isn't going to be equal to that same amount of money, and they're actually going to be investing more money into trying to get less and getting less out of it in the long run. So it's a really tricky situation, and I think as Lowell pointed out, also is that we're going to be taking up staff time. And I think right now, I mean, as much as we'd really like to address this issue, I think our staff is really on a, on a tight rope right now. We've really got, we have a lot of projects out in front of them, and a lot of work out in front of them, and I think we're better utilizing our staff time on, on more important projects like the specific plan downtown and safe streets. Thank you.
Okay, I think everybody has spoken now. So at this time, Beatrice, would you repeat the motion and take roll call?
The motion is to return the item back to council with alternatives for nonprofits.
For, okay, very good. Roll call, please.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Hurst?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. A motion passes. Okay, so we'll be getting a report back on this issue. Next on the agenda was the Watsonville Parklet Program, but we, the city manager has decided that we're going to have it for a future presentation, and so moving on, there is no emergency items. Now request for scheduling future agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to request a future agenda item? Okay, I see Ari and then Lowell. And not Ari, excuse me, Trina, Trina.
Yeah, I, I guess it's a little difficult to ask for a future agenda item when I, how many agendas do I really have left to discuss? Nonetheless, it would be good to have the talk about the emergency services study, because that was part of measure Y that we were going to do something. So I, I'd like to see that we are moving forward with what that will be, what it's going to include and, and the process that will take place there. So that would be beneficial for us as one.
Okay, thank you, Trina. Did I say Lowell?
Yes, you did.
My, at 11:30, my brain isn't working very well.
That's okay. You're, you're joining a good exclusive club here. The, if we're going to have the fireworks discussion, we should have it early on and not wait till June or, or May to, to, to bring in the nonprofits and, and scheme some, they need to be part of the, the fundraising-driven schemes, because they're the ones that are going to have to do it and, and, and live with the results as well. Sometime in the near future, I would assume we would be talking about food waste and the cost of, of recycling and, and, and trash fees and all of those things as well. Am I correct?
Yes, there will be updates on all of those topics coming before the council in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anybody else that wishes to request an agenda item? I, I have one. For those of you that remember the history of Watsonville, you know that the Filipino community has experienced some very serious discrimination in the past. And what I'm requesting is that, that in 1930, there was a riot against the Filipinos. And so I'm requesting a resolution to ask for an apology for these riots. So that's my request. So with that, unless somebody opposes, I will adjourn this meeting at 11:40. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Who was it who said this was a light agenda? Night, everybody.